Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting, the twenty first of August, two thousand and seventeen. Let's all rise for a pledge of allegiance followed by a period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with L B eight ninety-eight, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. So next week will be an open mic night. Will clerk please call the first item of business?
Yes, just a reminder to the public, due to the Labor Day holiday, there will be no city council meeting on Monday, September fourth. We would request those giving testimony to clearly, please clearly state your name and address and to sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. Our first item is our public hearing consent agenda, items one through thirteen.
Would anyone else, would anyone like to testify on one of these items? Next item, please.
If not, we can vote on these items. Items one and two were introduced by Gaylor Baird. So moved.
Second. Moved by Larry and seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird? Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Items eleven and thirteen were introduced by Raybold. So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Would anyone like to testify on these items, sorry? Okay. This, next item, please.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then are our public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. I'll call items fourteen and fifteen together. They're the application of El Sultan Lounge for a Class D liquor license at sixteen nineteen O Street, as well as the related manager application. Right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you verily believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
Safe Sayah. My place, my business address or my...
Business address is...
Yes, sixteen nineteen O Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, six eight five zero eight.
Mr. Sayah, please tell us about your application.
Well, I'm trying to rebuild my business. I did that back in two thousand and fourteen, and my business was destroyed by fire in two thousand and thirteen, uh, fifteen. So I just opened for like a month and a half, so I'm just trying like to do my business all over now.
Any questions from council? Thank you, sir. Best wishes.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next I'll call items sixteen and seventeen. They're the application of Murphy Oil, USA Incorporated, doing business as Murphy Express, number eight seven eight one, for a Class D liquor license at thirty-three zero one North Eighty-Fifth Street, and the related manager application of Jason Cubic. Should you raise your right hands? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you verily believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Just state your names and addresses.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Mike Kelly, twenty-eight oh four South Eighty-seventh Avenue in Omaha. Have a satellite officer in Lincoln as well. This is Jason Kubak, who's the manager. This is Murphy Oil. This is a convenience store, and we're here for any questions you might have.
Okay, questions? Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next is item eighteen, application of Babs Incorporated for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately sixty feet by ninety feet at the shops at Piedmont at twelve sixty-five South Cotner Boulevard on September twenty-ninth between ten A M. and eleven P M. And September thirtieth between five P M. and eleven P M.
Hi, everyone. Sorry, I'll finish that later.
Just state your name and address.
Uh, Brian Wallingford, twenty-two thirty North Sixtieth Street.
Well, please tell us about your event.
All right, this is the third year for the Piedmont Oktoberfest. This year it features six different local breweries, well, five breweries and a winery that does cider. We also bring in beer from Germany and then a couple from across the city, or from across the country. We have music. We set up a sixty-by-ninety tent. It's a twenty-one or older event. We have a third party doing wristbands and a third party pouring. There will be food there. There will be water and soda available as well, so it's not only alcohol. One thing with this event that's different from the other years is on the S D L, we were contemplating the night before, is the Nebraska-Illinois game. We'll already have the sixty-by-ninety tent. We'll already have the tables and everything. We were thinking of setting up a giant screen and projecting the game on there for free for anyone in the community that wanted to come watch it. We already have it set up, so we thought it might be a good idea. So that's why the S D L has an extra day this year than normal. Is, we're still kind of on the fence about it, not sure about logistics, but I just wanted to make sure I had it on there to be safe.
Okay, questions from council?
Yes, I was going to ask, Friday you said it's free?
Well, both events technically are free. You can always get into any of our events at the shops at Piedmont. Come and enjoy the entertainment, the atmosphere, all of that. The only thing that would cost would be the alcohol or the food. But all of our events are free for anyone to get in. Friday night would be in all ages, but again, we have third party that would be doing the wristbands and a third party that would be pouring if we, we end up doing that event.
Thank you.
And those were my questions to confirm that was going.
I thought we were going to go in free and free drinks.
I was more worried about the third party pouring on Friday.
Oh.
Sounds like he's got that under control.
It's a, it's a Knights of Columbus from one of the local Catholic churches that comes and does it as a fundraiser, so.
Okay, sounds good. Any other questions?
Safe and legal.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to... Would anyone else want to testify on this item?
Mr. Chair, seeing no one coming forward, I'd move approval of items fourteen through eighteen.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then are our public hearing ordinances, second reading. I'll call items nineteen through twenty-one together. They are an ordinance authorizing and providing for the issuance of not to exceed five million three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars aggregate stated principal amount of general obligation stormwater refunding bonds of the cities, ordinance authorizing and providing for the issuance of not to exceed fifteen million three hundred thousand dollars aggregate stated principal amount of sanitary sewer refunding bonds, and an ordinance authorizing the city to enter into a lease purchase transaction with Union Bank and Trust for the acquisition of streetlights for the city.
Members of council, Brandon Kaufman, Finance Director. So the first item here is a request to proceed with issuance of G O. Stormwater refunding bonds. So we've got a great headline for tomorrow's newspaper, "City Council Saves Seven Hundred and Sixty-Six Thousand Dollars." So anytime, anytime we come before you with refunding, it's always a great thing because we're saving the taxpayers a lot of money. So this has a principal amount of not to exceed about five point three million dollars. We've got Mike Rogers with Gilmore Bell, and then also Scott Keen with Ameritas. The G F O. recommended threshold for, is a three percent threshold for, for refundings. With this one, we're approximately at fourteen percent. So it's a great savings. We're looking at holding a competitive sell date is September sixteenth. And the structure of the debt is a ten-year repayment cycle, so we're staying on the current, current repayment cycle. We're not extending the life of it at all. The debt savings will also be structured evenly over the life of the structure. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Scott, who I believe has some comments on the marketplace.
Just quickly, the, the bond market's been very favorable. Post-election, the ten-year treasury rate ran from one point seven five percent to two and a half percent in the span of about a month and a half. It was a very quick rise in interest rates, and the ten-year treasury hung around the two and a half percent and has sort of slowly trailed down from there since February. And it's today at a two point one eight percent, which is a new low since prior to the election. So very favorable time to be doing this financing. It's one of the reasons that we're in front of you now and trying to get to market as quickly as we can to capture this level of savings. We have meetings this week with Standard and Poor's, and, and on the general obligation issue, we fully expect them to affirm the triple-A rating of the city. So that will make that financing very attractive. There's still great demand for tax-exempt bonds nationally, especially high credit quality issues like this one. So we think there'll be, we'll have a very successful competitive sale.
Questions? John?
Yes, Mr. Keen, good to see you.
Good to see you.
Because your retiring bonds, is there any pre-payment penalties on these?
Great question. These bonds were actually callable June first of this year. They just became callable a month or so ago at a premium, at a price of one hundred percent. So there is no premium, no penalty for refunding them early. The bondholders are aware that anytime after June one of two thousand and seventeen, they can be called away from them without, without a premium.
And could you walk us through where the cash comes from, where it goes, and then so forth?
Absolutely. The, the sources of funds are really twofold. The biggest chunk would come from the refunding bond issues, but, from the refunding bond issue. But there is also, the IRS likes to see that to the extent that the city has funds that they've collected to make the payments on the old bonds, that they allocate, that haven't been used on the old bonds, that they be used to downsize that refunding issue. So to the extent that we have money sitting in the debt service fund that would have been used for the two thousand and seven bonds, the IRS prefers to see those monies being used to, to make this refunding bond issue smaller. So there's a contribution that I am estimating of about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars that would come out of the Series two thousand and seven bond fund that would be used to downsize this bond issue and, and make it even smaller. But those are the two sources of funds. And then they, they would be used generally about thirty-five days after the sale. The day after the sale, we ask the trustee or the paying agent to disperse a call notice. We've promised bondholders that we would give them thirty days notice that their bonds are going to be called away from them. So generally, the process is that the day after the successful sale of the bonds, that paying agent distributes that call notice, and that starts that thirty-day clock. And so even though we're settling the bond issue, I apologize, even though we're settling the bond issue the week of October twenty-third, the, or, yeah, we, even though we'd be settling the bond issue the first week of October, we wouldn't be redeeming the bonds until October twenty-third, the week of October twenty-third. So it takes about thirty-five days, about two weeks after the sale. Bond, the, the buyers want to settle the bond issue. They want to deliver the funds to you. Then you hold those funds for about three weeks until we hit the redemption date on the old bonds, and they're paid off at that time.
So walking through the cash flow, I believe you said the headlines tomorrow say the council saved how much?
Seven hundred and sixty-six thousand.
Okay, so we save seven hundred and sixty-six thousand in interest, right? I don't want to put words in your mouth.
I, I would, I would, I would add that slightly, that we'll know what the savings are at the time we go to market with the bonds. So we really won't know until the bonds are sold that week of September eighteenth, what the exact interest rates are, what the exact savings are. But our conservative estimate of those savings is about seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
So we could save...
Present value, I think we've had this discussion before as well. Generally, we look at refundings by looking at the savings in today's dollars, not the savings spread over the life of the issue, because a dollar of savings we're getting ten years from now isn't worth as much as a dollar of savings we'd be getting today. So we, we, by convention, discount all of those savings over the life of the issue to today's dollars, and that's the seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars that Brandon mentioned.
Present value is that, and what discount rate did you use?
Use the discount rate, the all-in rate on the refunding bonds, which is also by convention the appropriate rate to use of one point nine seven percent.
Okay. And so you said you anticipate an additional two hundred and twenty thousand dollars saved?
No, there really won't be savings associated with that, because that's a contribution. That's monies that the city has to pay out. So what, what happens is that we're, we're reducing the size of the bond issue by two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, but the city is making that contribution as part of the refunding, so it's only fair to count that as a cost to the city. So it's, so the city's making the contribution. We have bond proceeds, and when you compare the debt service payments of the old bonds to the debt service payments of the new bonds, including that two hundred and twenty thousand dollar contribution, that's how the savings are calculated.
And Mr. Kaufman, so with that seven hundred and sixty-six thousand present value, where does that money go?
That money would come out of the debt service fund, so in the future, when budgets are adjusted, we would adjust accordingly to the payments.
So it would go into the debt service fund and become a balance there?
Or we lower the levies or the tax rate for that specific fund.
I like the latter. So another way we can lower the tax levy?
That's correct.
Would that be like another one mil?
Oh...
Unfortunately, the, the savings associated with this financing are, were currently estimating about eighty thousand dollars per year, so it would not have a significant impact on the, on the tax levy of the city. But every bit helps, and, and clearly by saving this, it is lowering the tax burden, even if it is a modest amount per household.
I would bet if I asked our audience here if eighty thousand dollars is significant, every hand would go up. Thank you.
Happily shared amongst all two hundred and ninety thousand of us.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item?
Are we talking about the first one or all three?
Now we're going on to the next item.
Okay. Okay, so the next item we have is a request to proceed with issuance of sanitary sewer revenue refunding bonds. So the source of funding here would be a sanitary sewer wastewater fund. So any savings would, would impact that fund with a principal amount of not to exceed fifteen point three million. Same thing, G F O. recommends a three percent threshold. Currently, we're estimating somewhere around thirteen percent. The debt service savings would be one point nine million. Once again, that's an estimate until the actual prices come in on the bid date.
Present value?
What's that?
Present value again?
Yes. The structure of the debt is there's fifteen years currently left on the repayment. That would stay the same in this case, so we're not extending it beyond, beyond the current life of the debt. The savings are also structured over the life of the remaining of the bonds.
The only two things I would add is that the outstanding two thousand and seven sewer revenue bonds have an average rate of four point three nine percent, and our, our conservative estimate of the current rates would be two, we'd be replacing those bonds with new bonds having a rate of approximately two point five percent. So a pretty significant drop. I failed to mention on the, on the G O. issue, we're dropping from about four point seven six percent on the old bonds to our estimate of one point eight seven percent. So a pretty, as you can see, a pretty dramatic change in interest rates from, from when the bonds were issued. Again, we're meeting with, with both Moody's and Standard and Poor's on this financing this week, and again, fully expect them to affirm our outstanding ratings of double-A one for Moody's and double-A plus from S and P.
Cindy?
Yeah, could you just give us the annual on that one? You gave us eighty thousand last one.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
I was trying to remember all the things that I...
Two hundred and ten thousand.
About a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars per year over the fifteen years of this financing.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the same analysis that I mentioned with regards to the, the contribution, if we follow the IRS sort of gentle recommendation of an amount to contribute from the existing debt service funds, we'd be contributing about one point three million dollars.
Other questions? Would anyone like to testify in tw- number twenty, so you can go on to twenty-one?
Okay. The next item, number twenty-one, is a request to proceed with issuance of certificates of participation, or commonly referred to as COPS, for streetlights, light purchases. That would be in a principal amount not to exceed three point seven seven five million, which would generate approximately three point six million for projects, for streetlights. So we've got represented also from Public Works that are going to be available for questions in L E S. The structure of the debt would be over a ten-year repayment cycle with level debt service payments.
Questions? John?
Since you're our fairly new Finance Director, you've probably heard a little bit, though, about the past dialogue on COPS bonding certificates of participation and the fact we've gone from a substantially low, a very low amount up to, oh, about thirty-eight million currently. Had been a size forty-three million, but had been earlier, I think, ten years ago or so, around a million. If the council does not approve using certificates of participation, which do not require the vote of our citizens, what would be another avenue to handle this funding?
Well, I think you've got probably two ways to fund this. You've ever, you've got cash contributions through the budget or a debt, or funds coming from debt. So this is, I know on the streetlights, this has been an annual amount that goes to, you know, fund the improvements of enhancements in the community for the streetlights, putting items underground and general maintenance. You know, without this debt funding, we'd have to make some type of cash allocation from the budget to, to be able to continue meeting the needs of streetlight maintenance in the community.
And you said, said the annual payment would be how much?
Approximately four hundred and twenty thousand. And all that's, that's an estimate, same until we go to market and...
Hey, Jane?
I don't know if Brandon, if this would be your topic to talk about, the electrical savings that we would see by installing the L E D. lighting.
And on that, I think I will defer to Public Works.
Randy Hoskins, Assistant City Engineer. Basically, when, when we look at L E D. street lighting, we can figure that for the electricity, electricity usage alone, we're probably going to save about fifty to sixty percent per fixture. There's certain fixtures that are higher than that, some that'll be a little lower. Then there's also a savings when we go to L E D.s of also the maintenance costs that L E S. charges us. And so there's kind of a twofold savings when we go to, to L E D. streetlights.
So have you calculated the return on investment by, by adding these additional street lamps or upgrading the existing ones by using L E D. light fixtures?
If we were to do a change out of the whole city, there's about ten to eleven percent of the existing streetlights that have already been switched over to L E D.s. If we were to do the rest of them, it's, it's estimated that would cost around eleven million dollars. Now, we would also get back then about one, our, our costs would be reduced by about one point one million dollars a year. And so the payback on such a, such a thing would be a little less than ten years.
So I guess the question, I would like to see a little more specific kind of answer. We're talking about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year for this project. What does this project save us a year in electrical and maintenance?
Well, and, and here's, here's maybe where it needs clarified. This is not for an L E D. changeover. There will be new systems built, new signals, or new traffic, street lights put up, excuse me, that will be put up as a result of the projects that L E S. will be doing. And so each of those will result in the savings for that. But, but this is more for things like when Public Works does a project and we put streetlights in with it. It's when a, any sort of unexpected maintenance goes on. A pole gets hit by a vehicle, has to be replaced. We do replacements every year for poles that are, that are beyond their useful life, those sorts of things. So in each of those cases, we will be putting in L E D. heads with each one of those, but overall, this is not, that's not the main point of this money that we're talking about.
John?
You confused me by your last comment or two. We're looking at three point seven seven five million, and that, I'll let you say how many poles that would replace? Well, the note I got back from you was eight hundred to a thousand.
That, that is, that is an average number per year, that eight hundred to a thousand of the existing...
Thirty-three thousand.
luminaires would be, would be changed out. But that's things like when a, when a light goes out and L E S. goes out and puts a new one up, they put up an L E D. head now. And so we're talking about things like miscellaneous streetlight relocations. If, if there's a, a location where the, the light is not doing its job and we need to change it, then, then this money could pay for that. And there again, when that goes up, it will be a new L E D. head. Talking about things like rebuilds, like we've been doing along Seventy-Eighth Street, because those, those poles were old and about, you know, concerns with, with them falling down. Again, every one of those would be replaced with an L E D. head. But, but this is not specifically to go out and start replacing just the heads.
So this is really a maintenance element, and then in the process of maintaining, where appropriate, you'd replace the current incandescent head or whatever, for us, with a, an L E D.
I, I would say this is, this is more of a heavy maintenance cost, if you will. We, we do pay a certain amount each year based on, on what it costs L E S. to put in or, or to fix the, and repair and maintain the system. We do pay that separately. That's, that's about a million dollars a year, and that comes out of general fund. But then this is kind of what I would call the heavier type maintenance, those things that are not, not just scheduled sorts of things. These are kind of beyond that.
I'm kind of vague on my recollection numbers. Am I right that approximately three million a year is paid to L E S. on streetlights? And is that all for the electricity, or is that for a combination of electricity and the repair and maintenance of the existing?
There's about two point two million a year that's paid to L E S. About a million of that is electrical costs, and then about one point three million, or one point two million is the, the maintenance that we pay to them.
Say those numbers again, please.
About, well, it's about a million dollars for electricity and about one point two million for the maintenance.
So you're saying if we, when Ms. Raybold, Councilmember Raybold, was asking you about the whole fleet, or you said all the remaining ninety percent of the thirty-three thousand streetlights that aren't L E D., if you went ahead and did those, you said that would cost about eleven million, and we'd be a one point one a year savings from L E S. So we currently pay two point two million to L E S. One million is for the electricity, and one point two... One million is for the electricity and one point two millions for the maintenance. How do we achieve one half of that and reduce that to fifty percent?
Again, we're looking at fifty to sixty percent average savings in electricity. And then we will also see a savings in maintenance costs from LES because the average incandescent or the, the type of lights that they're, that they're using now, they're not incandescent, generally lasts probably five to seven years, something like that. An LED head will last twenty years. So there's a lot less maintenance that'll be required of LES in order to keep the system updated. And so that's where we will see savings on that.
But you're, you're paying already this two point two million and now you want to pay an extra three point seven million, three point eight million. Like you said, heavy maintenance. So with the one point two million, what are we getting?
I'm sorry?
What do we get with the current one point two million we pay every year?
That is, that is primarily, I don't know. Do you want to take it, Jeff?
Hello, Jeff Law Watch with Lincoln Electric System. I supervise the streetlight department. Um, to answer your question, Mr. Camp, the maintenance costs, so there's a difference between capital costs versus maintenance costs. So our maintenance costs that LES bills for in our monthly billing rate is for things like lamp changeouts. That's a non-capital cost. Locating underground cable so it doesn't get hit by contractors, that's a non-capital cost. Pole painting, pole inspections, those are non-capital costs. So those are the types of things that we do with that monthly bill or monthly rate.
What if I hit a streetlight and it knocks the pole over? Is that capital or maintenance?
That depends. Now typically, car pole accident would be paid for by the insurance company, but of course, we get hit and runs on occasion. In that case.
Do that too.
I, I hopefully you wouldn't do that. But that does happen on occasion. Um, we try to work it out with the individual who hit the pole and their insurance company typically will, will cover those expenses. But that would be a new pole and a new head assembly typically in most instances, which would be a capital investment if we were to, if the city were to have to pay for replacement of that. So new poles, new head assemblies, new underground facilities, new wire, new conduit, new pole bases. Those things are capital expenses and that's what the certificate of participation funding is typically used for. To give you an idea, this year we rebuilt Seventieth Street from O Street all the way down to Old Post. Okay? And that included new conduit, new pole bases, you know, everything. It's a full rebuild. That, those facilities needed to be updated so we can prevent poles from falling over, things like that. So some other areas we also took care of was Northwest Twelfth Street and Highland Boulevard. And so those projects, just those three rebuild projects for this year alone, total to be about one and a half million dollars.
Okay. Cindy and then Benny?
Thank you. Okay, so I had a couple of questions. One is, I'm still having a struggle with what, like what on our agenda as to acquisition of streetlights. So I'm, I'm looking for maybe, because this is bonding that the, um, citizens don't vote on, if we were putting it in front of the citizens for a vote, can you give me the one or two sentences, what are we going to tell them it's for?
I'll, I'll do my best to explain that one, I guess. Um, the certificate of participation that's being requested is typically for street widening projects where we have to relocate poles. Brand new roads or streets that are being installed or new poles are required to be installed and rebuild areas like we just discussed on Seventieth Street. Basically, any new pole, new luminaire that goes in, those, any of those capital expenses, that's what this certificate of participation funds on a yearly basis.
And over what period of time is this expected to be spent?
I don't know if you want to.
I think annually, it's probably somewhere from two to three point five million annual spend. I mean, it's, it's fairly significant. That's why I think we come back on an annual basis to, to fund the COPS for streetlights.
So this is for one year's streetlights?
Yes.
And then you're going to come back next year and ask for another ten-year bond payment for one year's worth of streetlights?
Correct.
Okay. When you mentioned the four hundred and twenty thousand, is that principal and interest is that the complete debt service for this per year?
Yes.
Over ten years, is that what you said?
Correct.
Thank you. And, and you had been kind enough to provide us with some information, thank you, about the COPS bonds in the past. I appreciate that. One of the things you sent us was a pie chart of where those bonds have been spent and I, I had a question about the eleven million that was indicated was for miscellaneous. Can you tell me what's included? It was a pretty big chunk. It was like thirty-nine percent or something?
That, that wouldn't be miscellaneous. That would be MSC.
Oh, okay. So can you tell us what that is then? I misunderstood. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so that, that kind of blue chunk that has eleven point six eight five million, that's the outstanding principal balance for the MSC at thirty-one percent of the overall total.
That's the center out there on Bond Street?
Yes.
And then it looks to me like we paid off, last year, we paid off a, what, six point eight nine or almost six point nine million in principal and interest on these bonds? Is that right?
Approximately.
Okay. And so there are a few of them that have, are they falling off? Is that?
That's correct.
Okay.
And let's say if, if you approve this one, um, I think at the end of last year, I said we were sitting somewhere about thirty-seven million. You know, you'd add three point seven, but you're also having payments drop off. So I estimate it to be somewhere about thirty points, thirty-six point six million by the end of next year.
And then we got a letter today that indicates that our entire, the bond indebtedness that the people have voted on is about forty-five million.
I believe that's correct. That would be the general obligation outstanding balance.
Is forty, and that's what, when the people vote on their bonds, the bonds that they have voted to support. Okay. And then, so this, and we're at thirty-seven million right now. Before this, thirty-seven million that has not been voted on by the people, but that we bonded. Is that accurate? Okay, thank you.
Benny?
Thank you. Randy, sure, thank you. Randy, I'd like to talk with you about the, the percentage of LEDs right now. And I was excited. I thought we were going to put a lot more out. I understand we're going to do some more maintenance, but there will be an increase in the number of LED lights through this maintenance process. What about that and new developments? Will, does this also include new subdivisions that are being built and lights that go in?
Yes. Um, in the past, I believe it's been a year or so, we changed the, the city's code to require that any new streetlights that go up are now LEDs. So yeah, any, any new subdivisions around the edge of town, those will all be LEDs.
And does that come out of this fund or comes out of?
No, that is paid for by the developer. And so, um, yeah, those are sort of free to us.
It sounds like fun. And so right now, if you look at the ninety, the eleven percent that are there already, ninety percent is what we need to go to be at a hundred percent LED. That number's going to be shaved off a little bit by this ma- heavy maintenance. Would that be fair to?
Right. Yeah, you're, yeah. Over time, you know, we talked about, should we wait and go over time and, and just kind of through attrition, move to all LEDs or should we try to do a heavier lift and try to get it done sooner? And so we have been in contact, um, looking at some, some folks that, that could possibly do that for us. And so we're talking about them right now. Part of that, we'll, we'll look at what sort of financing we can find to do that as well.
And that number, if I remember, Councilman Camp's number is like eleven million to replace everything?
Yes.
Other questions? I have a question. Oh, John, go ahead.
Thank you. On that eleven million, what if we just went and did the whole thing and go to the people for a vote on that if it saves so much? That's only triple what you're asking for now.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's certainly something we could do. Um, we still would need those, those capital type expenditures that, that Jeff was talking about though. And so we, we would still need.
But shouldn't that be financed out of our general budget as it is? And out of that three million or two point two million we pay to LES every year?
That's Brandon's call. He's got to come up with that.
If we used to do this, this on an annual basis, cash flow, we didn't use COPS and all.
Well, I think before it was done on an annual basis, the charges were coming from LES. And I think the one thing that Don Hirsch looked at was, you know, those rates were substantially higher than what the city could finance them at through the COP program. So that's what started the city issuing COPs because we could save money from the rate that LES was charging.
Doesn't LES have the same bond ratings we have since it's our subsidiary?
They would be a little bit higher than us, but Scott, could you give me any background?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not an expert on LES's credit, but they, I do know they're a double A rated utility. And for a triple A rated city to have property backs, property tax backstopping, a COPS financing means the rate's significantly lower than a double A rated revenue issue. So our cost of borrowing, the city's cost of borrowing for COPS is lower than LES's cost of borrowing for their revenue bonds. And I think they weren't necessarily passing along to the city what their cost of borrowing was. I think it was higher than that.
Well, we do get the LES dividend now of nine million a year. What about, uh, that prior item we talked about on the sanitary sewer refunding of fifteen point three million? What if we went out and did twenty-six point three million and do a GO bond or? And that way, we get that lower rate.
Yes. Um, I defer to bond council as to our ability to, to, to do general obligation bonds for a revenue project, but clearly the, the borrowing rate would be lower. Um.
I think the, the sanitary sewer fin-
Peace yourself, please.
Thank you. Mike Rogers with Gilmore and Ballot Bond Council to the city. Uh, the, the sanitary sewer financing is a revenue bond issue, so it's not compatible with the, it's not the same, it's not the triple A credit that we were talking about with the COPS issue.
How about a GO bond?
Could you do a GO bond for?
Or a streetlights?
No, sanitary sewer.
Some way to make them in the same pot so we can get the issuance costs and everything?
To do a GO bond for the sanitary sewer financing, is that?
Well, I'm, I'm trying to look at a way that maybe it'd be better just to do all the LED conversion now. And then, but do a bonding so that people can have their say on that, but do it for the combined sanitary and for the LED. So total about twenty-six point three million.
Or the combined storm sewer and LED? The storm sewer is the general obligation bond issue that was approved.
Oh, okay. Sure. That'd be fine.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not, I'm just trying to.
Maybe I misspoke. I apologize.
No, that's, that's fine. I was just trying to.
You tell us you're a bond council.
Make sure I understand the, uh, the direction we're headed. So I, so, um, yeah, if there were, I think the, the, uh, storm sewer refunding issue is obviously a general obligation bond. That was voted on by the electorate in two thousand and seven, I believe. Uh, and so the, so the proposal now is just to refund those bonds soon to, to capture the interest savings before, uh, before markets change. To do a bond election, yes, if we had voter approval to do another general obligation bond issue, we could combine that with the, with this, that would be fine. I, I guess the question is whether you could do streetlights as a general obligation bond issue and I would have to look into that. I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
I, I think I might have something to, I'm sorry, now that I understand exactly what you're asking, Mr. Camp. The, the differential in interest rates between the city's triple A certificates of participation and your triple A general obligation rating is probably something between maybe five and ten basis points or five or ten one-hundredths of a percent. So if the borrowing rate for your, for your GO bonds was two point five percent for the COPS, it might be two point five five or two point six percent. It's just a very slight differential. On this financing, um, that's, that's being proposed at the current rates, a, a ten basis point difference in interest rates, so sort of the outside range of that would mean that if we were to vote this issue and use the city's triple A rated general obligation bonds, we'd save about eighteen thousand dollars over the ten-year life of the financing or about eighteen hundred dollars per year by doing them as general obligation bonds rather than as COPS. That's sort of what I see as kind of the outside realm. It's, it's probably a little bit less on shorter maturities and probably maybe getting out to eight, nine, ten percent or ten basis points on the longer maturities. So it's not a huge difference and I think you have to analyze the costs of doing an election against that as well, but it's, if you're doing a mathematical calculation trying to compare them, I think probably have to include that in analysis as well. Would be a little bit of savings on interest rates, but, but not, not huge, mostly because the city has such a strong triple A rating on its COPS financings.
But it sounds, from what I'm pulling together here, that if we did the whole LED thing now, did a vote, a citizen vote on that for eighteen hundred a year, that's, my goodness, we do that and we save half a, a million a year in, at least in energy savings. It was sixty percent, six hundred thousand a year. And we get it done and then we don't have to do these COPS every year for three or four million. I kind of like that better.
I think that's still preliminary in the process. Um, they're working with a company that's an ESCO firm to really analyze and go more in, in depth on the LED analysis. So I don't think we're at a point in time where we're ready to step forward on that. We are at a point in time where we're, I think we've got sixty thousand left remaining in COPS funding that do the capital type projects for streetlights. So we're going to run out, out of money shortly on, for a streetlight. So at some point, we need to, we need to make a decision to move forward. Holding off, I'm not sure how much longer in the process it would take for an ESCO. Do you have any estimate?
I think based on the work that's been done, we, um, may be coming forward with a, a contract on that, possibly even within the next few months, so.
Gosh, why do this? Hell, we, heck, we have LES and its crews too. They can be their own in-house ESCO for us. I mean, I, I'm really serious on this, that it just, it, it seems wise that with energy savings being, you know, efficient there, that we're being good to the environment, good to the taxpayers. Um, I, I just don't like this, to talk about this continual COPS financing and that's debt finance government.
I, I have a question kind of related to that then. Does the city have a debt management policy that over, that guides us in how we do these things?
The city does not currently have a debt service policy in place. I think that's one thing that we've, since I've come here, I've drafted and we've been working on and, uh, hope to take that out soon. Typically though, debt service policies aren't structured to limit by instrument. Um, typically, there are broader indicators of overall debt. So you're looking at global stuff like debt service as a percent of your total valuation of the city, or you're looking at debt service expenditures compared to total governmental expenditures. So it typically doesn't limit things by instrument type, because when you do limit things by instrument type, there's also other instru- instruments that can be utilized typically. So then you're shifting from one to the other. So I would recommend that when you're looking at a debt service policy, that you're looking at it more from a global indicator standpoint.
Do you have an antici- anticipated timeline of when that policy would be ready?
You know, I think we've got it drafted now and, um, probably we could bring it before the council in the next one to two months.
Jane?
Can you talk to us a little bit about why Lincoln has such a stellar bond rating of triple A on, on all their financing? I mean, how do many municipalities achieve such a high, um, level of quality of bonds?
Well, there's a number of things that go into the rating. Economy, we have a strong economy. We have a very strong management rating. They look at our budget. They look, look at liquidity on hand, you know, debt service compared to overall expenses. And also they look at contingent li- or other post-employment benefits like pension liabilities. And they take, and also they look at the state, um, framework that, uh, the state constitution sets out for cities for taxing abilities and they summarize all that. And currently, we're a triple A rated for our general obligation. Even with a triple A rated, they take into, uh, impact capital, capital leases or like COPs and how those impact the overall budget. So they look at it from a global perspective.
So even without a, a debt policy, we still have a triple A bond rating?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Other questions? Larry?
It sounds like there's some concerns among some council members about this, these items and so- items. And so, can you help us understand if this item were to fail tonight, what the practical implications are for the city?
Got to be more-
Well, it's not gonna be voted on tonight.
Well, fail.
Yeah, I guess, I guess, um, the question would come how, how we would pay for, for those sorts of things that, that are typically paid for. Again, the, the capital-type items that Jeff was talking about earlier, how would we pay for those?
Well, I think maybe we start with the question, if we didn't have funding tomorrow, which we've got about sixty thousand in cash currently, what would be the result on the heavy capital side from LES's standpoint?
Um, that's probably difficult for me to answer from a financial standpoint because I'm not in our financial department and I don't know how we would handle billing. You know, these large projects are currently under construction. We bill for them monthly. Sixty thousand dollars probably won't scratch the bill for next month considering Seventieth Street's coming to a close. And again, that was a, like, eight hundred thousand dollar project to the best of my recollection. So, if you think about that billing coming through and we only have sixty thousand dollars in funds to cover that bill coming through, I'm not sure, I guess, between LES and the city, how they would deal with that financial concern.
I think I'll follow up on it. From a financial standpoint, like I mentioned, we've got sixty thousand funds left. We have bills coming in, so if there are not funds approved, I think we'd have to go back to the table to figure out how we could scrounge up some money. And I think as Steve Hubkes said, dig through the couch cushions to, to try to fund streetlight projects in the community.
So, you're just kind of assuming the city council will keep approving these every year and you get down to sixty thousand each year, and so we have to do another three or four million of these?
I think from a staff standpoint, we're coming with a recommendation to finance it.
But shouldn't this have come a lot earlier? You could see the time path of what these expenses are?
These were included in the annual operating budget. So, I, I think that would be-
COPs bonds were included in the operating budget?
Yes, for issuance for this year. So, that would, to me, that's the planning perspective of, it was included in the annual budget. Now, we're coming forward with a financing proposal.
So, you, well, you could do it some other way, do a vote of the people or something like, some of these other alternatives we talked about. It wasn't COPs. And again, there's been a lot of dialogue on the COPs not wanting to go higher. In fact, shave them down so we get into a, a much lower level, maybe not as low as the million we used to have, but-
I think that's definitely a policy consideration for the governing body to decide whether COPs are appropriate or, um, GO bonds are appropriate.
But it sounds like to me that we've already approved the, the budget that included this, this form of financing in it already.
No.
So, and we've already committed the funds to go ahead forward with these projects. So, absent the, a different type of mechanism in place, we have to go with what is being presented, what has already been approved by all of us in, in the budget to, to move this forward.
Budget doesn't approve COPs, but you're saying you anticipated this funding from some source. Is that not what you said a moment ago?
It was included in the operating budget as a plan to issue, issue COPs for streetlights in the two thousand sixteen to two thousand eighteen biennial budget.
So, why are you coming to us today to ask us to approve it, if it was approved in the biennial budget?
We have to have city council approval through an ordinance to issue bonds or to issue the COPs.
So, it wasn't approved in the biennial budget?
I think it was planned for during the biennial budget, but any type of issuance of bonds requires city council approval.
Okay, other questions? Larian?
Well, uh, COPs have been issued for streetlights, sidewalk, and sidewalks in fiber, and going back as far as two thousand and seven at least. Do you know the history? I mean, it looks like we've issued two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, and seventeen, with some of it being a rolling thing where you just transfer budgeted payments to the, the new issues. Is that correct, how it's been working?
I think that'd be a correct statement.
It's a pattern that's been going on for ten years, and it certainly, we have to list anticipated funding sources in the budgets. I think that's what Brandon's saying, is that this was transparently, you know, delineated in the, in the budget as the anticipated way to move forward. But, you know, we do have, coming up in January and February, March and April, a plan to have lengthy budget discussions, sort of by topic area, and, you know, find, how we finance some of these things and whether or not we want to have a policy discussion. I think there's a real appropriate time for, for having an even lengthier discussion about that if you want to, and like, maybe that's something you could make a note of, that we want to talk about that in the future.
Other questions? Thank you. Next, would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next is item twenty-two, approving the closeout of completed construction projects and transfer of unspent appropriations and cash, if any, from various projects to projects where additional funding is needed within the Public Works and Utilities Department and the Parks and Recreation Department.
I'm Miki Esposito, Director of Public Works and Utilities, and actually, I'm standing in for Brandon since he's in the back. I think this is finances legislation, but I, if you have any questions for us, I'll, I'll have him join me as well, but I can, we can respond to the public works items.
Questions? Cindy?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that the figures that are in this legislation are stated in thousands, is, like, the, the transfers from one fund to another?
I don't believe so. I, I have to look at the legislation.
Okay, so, uh, okay, so, um, like, the, the well field, the first one was the well field, was seven hundred and forty-four dollars and two cents, or is that?
It's seven hundred and forty-four dollars and two cents.
Okay, it's seven hundred and forty-four dollars and two cents?
Mm-hmm.
It's the actual, okay. So, and then, and so, the, the well-filled project is the one that we actually got additional funding for after the budget was passed, correct?
Yeah, and I'll bring up Donna Garden to talk a little bit about how that was partially funded with grant dollars. Oh, here he is. Did you have any introductory?
Donna Garden, Public Works and Utilities. It is seven hundred and forty-four dollars and two cents. We were closing out that project that the money is coming from, and we're just putting it on the well field that's currently under construction. And that well field that is under construction did get the additional water sustainability fund money of seven point six million from the state.
Okay, so this is actually going to the one that's now being built that has the additional funding?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
John? Now, was how much for the well field on that grant?
Um, the grant, the actual grant amount was seven point six million. The total project is about twice that amount. I don't know the exact figure there.
But the city saved that seven point six million?
Correct.
And I recall several months ago, there was some discussion in private about what to do with that savings. Was anything ever done?
We had looked at additional water main replacement, I believe, as one of the options and some other things. We also have bonding coming up in the future. We're hoping not to bond for as much money to keep our rates low.
I believe those will be discussed in the next budget cycle too, whatever projected uses of that savings will be, will be discussed in the next budget cycle, if that makes any sense, where we talk about rates and whether to issue new bonds.
Three point seven seven five million?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear your question.
Could we use three point seven seven five million to do some streetlights?
Well, unfortunately, it's a color of money issue, and you have certain legalities associated with certain types of funding, and water rates can't be used for streetlighting, so, sorry about that.
Color of money.
Yeah, color of money.
Cindy?
I'm sorry, thank you. So, what is the savings in this cycle from the seven point three million dollar grant?
As we get, as we get a bill, an invoice on the construction that's going on out there, I think it's a sixty forty split between the, the city and the grant money. So, we submit that money to the Department of Natural Resources, and they provide refunds as that money is spent. So, if it doesn't cost the entire amount, then we will get less than that. That was what was originally granted to us at the beginning.
So, how much did we budget for it last year and this year that we're not going to have to pay? We, because we had a, we had some kind of debt service?
We had in, in our CIP-
Right.
We had the full amount of the project, which I think was approximately fourteen million dollars.
I believe that's right.
And that included bank stabilization for our current island. It included the transmission main that goes under the plat and the well field, or the well fourteen to the new horizontal collector well.
And then, when we raised the rates, there was a percentage of that rate that was supposed to go towards that service for that project, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and that's the number I'm after. For last year and this year, how much is that? For sixteen, seventeen, and seventeen, eighteen?
The rate increase?
The savings, what we had set aside, what we collected extra that we didn't have to use for its intended purpose.
I don't know the exact number there, in terms of how much money has been spent so far.
Yeah, so, how it works is that we will expend the dollars to build the well, and then we'll submit for reimbursement. And when we receive those proceeds back on the grant, that's when we'll know what kind of savings we, we truly have. And that reimbursement request will be up to the seven million.
So, how much have we collected so far on that rate increase related to this project?
We haven't submitted any for reimbursement.
She's talking about rate, um-
Yeah, the rate increases, certain percentage rate increase.
And, and I want to emphasize also, that was for our entire operating budget and our entire CIP, and it also goes to debt service. We are planning to have a revenue bond issuance here coming up very soon because our capital improvement program is very sizable. It didn't inclu- included, and it will be reduced, that amount that we have to bond will be reduced by a certain amount. So, um, future rate increases may be impacted by that, but I don't think we're seeing an impact at this moment in time.
Well, I, see, I thought we had a discussion when it came in, well, that there was going to, for the sixteen seventeen, it wasn't a full year of rate increases, but that about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars of it was anticipated for the well field. And then it would be, I'm guessing, grown the following year because we would have the full year of rate, and that's the number I'm looking for. Can you just get that to me at some point?
I can, I can certainly get that information to you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Okay, other questions? Would anyone else like to testify, like, our Parks Director?
I am certainly, Lynn Johnson, Lincoln Parks and Recreation. I'm certainly available for questions this evening. And just so the council knows, this is kind of the annual cleanup ordinance that we work with Public Works to put together to look at projects that may have remaining funds and then transferring those to other projects. We work very closely with finance to put that together, and so, this is kind of that annual process of, of looking at the CIP and adjusting funds as needed. And again, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
John? I have to congratulate you, coming up with a savings of forty cents in one project and seven cents in the other in reallocating that.
That is, that is a very detailed accountant in our section right now. Our, our department is pleased to have that.
Just to account for that, but thank you for your honesty. Okay, would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next I'll call items twenty-three through thirty-five, as they are all personnel items. We have amending chapter two point seven six of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to personnel system by amending section two point seven six point zero four zero definitions to clarify language regarding what constitutes a promotion for employees. Amending two point seven six relating to the personnel system by amending section two point seven six point three seventy, authorized holidays to amend language regarding personal holiday increments. Amending pay schedules for certain employee groups by adjusting the pay range schedules for employees whose classifications are assigned to the following pay ranges, the letters E, W, X, P, N, A, C, B, and M, all to be effective August twenty-fourth, two thousand and seventeen. We also have amending the pay schedule for the X classifications to delete the classifications of Legal Secretary One, Employment Clerk, and Benefits Clerk. An ordinance revising and simplifying the excluded X pay plan. And that's it.
Doug McDaniel, Human Resources, sorry, and Nicole Gross, Compensation Manager, Human Resources. Uh, the first ordinance, seventeen one oh two, is clarifying language which identifies what truly a promotion is, while as simply as that may seem, we had some consternation from customers as they're doing reallocations and wanting to maybe do a different percentage than what a promotion allows for. So, we insert language into the code that identifies strictly that a promotion is in which a vacancy exists and is filled through a competitive process. So, it just makes it very clear and distinguishes it from another reallocation process internally. Questions?
John? I'm kind of the financial guy. Could you go through each of these and tell us what savings or what extra costs are the result of them?
When, well, sure. I mean, I'll speak to those. Which one are you, I mean, you're talking about all of the different, uh-
Twelve or thirteen of them?
Pay changes, or, I was going through each ordinance, John, so, I mean-
You didn't want to tie, that wasn't-
Well, I can speak to them all if you'd like, you know, so-
Might as well.
Okay, very good, all right. Seventeen one oh three is changed to the code, which basically is cleanup that speaks to what increments, a personal holiday dime, time can be used, and whether it's two hours or less, we basically move that for all areas except for the Ms. Seventeen one oh four, this is the annual change for cost of living for the excluded E groups. These are unrepresented. It's a two point five percent increase to this pay plan. Seventeen employees are involved in this at a cost of thirty-nine thousand one hundred and twelve dollars, which is in the budget. Seventeen one oh five amends the pay schedule for the Ws. These are unrepresented W class, two point oh percent adjustment to the pay plan. There are forty-three people in this pay plan at a cost of ninety-six thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. Seventeen eleven is cleanup. We eliminate classification from the X unrepresented pay plans that are no longer being used. Seventeen one oh six amends the pay schedule for the unrepresented X pay plan and simplifies it. It's a two point five percent increase. Seventeen employees are impacted at a cost of twenty-nine thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars, which is in the budget. Twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, I can list each one of those individually, but those are the, basically, the second year of any negotiated contract, which you've already approved. This just approves the pay plan for that second year of the contract. And if you'd like me to go through each one of them, I certainly will. I'm seeing a nod from Mr. Camp, so-
He would like it.
Okay. Seventeen one oh seven, uh, excuse me, I apologize. I skipped seventeen one oh seven. That's an ordinance, ordinance with revising and simplifying the excluded pay plan. What we do in this particular pay plan that's excluded, it historically followed the N pay plan of page. Historically, it had seventy pay grades for, again, about twenty different classifications because it just followed that pay plan. We simplify it through Ms. Gross's work to twenty pay ranges and simplify it. We'll probably make up the savings in paper, so. Seventeen one twelve, amending the pay schedule for P, which is LPU, that is a three point two five percent increase. Seventeen one thirteen, that's the N, that's-
One second, how many employees and what's the dollar cost on that?
Um, I don't know that we have the dollar cost.
Two hundred and ninety-five employees.
We don't have the actual dollar cost. It would be, obviously, it's in the budget because it's the second year, but we didn't calculate the cost for that, for each one that was already in the budget. Okay? It'll be the same for all these unionized plans, John. So, seventeen one thirteen, that is the page contract, two point five percent was negotiated, and this will be the, the pay plan for the second year of that contract. Seventeen one fourteen, that is the As under the LCEA, that'll be two point four percent. And then seventeen one fifteen is the Cs within that same union, LCEA, they have both A and C pay plans, two point four percent increase. Seventeen one sixteen is ATU, so the B pay plan is two point two five percent increase. And seventeen one seventeen, the pay schedule for the M, LMCEA pay plan is one point seven percent.
Larian has a question.
Sort of similar, just maybe put a different way. Are any of these changes that you're discussing with us tonight, the proposed, any of them not budgeted for, any of them in excess of what was budgeted?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Testify on this item, or these, any of these items?
Testify on this item, or these, any of these items. Next item, please.
All right, next is item thirty-six, change of zone one seven zero one seven. Application of Alpha Epsilon Association of Theta Xi to designate the Theta Xi Fraternity House as a landmark, changing the zoning district from B four to B four Lincoln Center Business with landmark overlay on property located at fifteen thirty-five R Street.
Hi, thank you. I'm Eric Hemmingson, fifteen thirty-five R Street. I represent the Corporate Board of the Alumni Association. We own the house. We would respectfully request that you approve the historic landmark designation as was unanimously recommended by the Planning Commission.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you.
Very much. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next are items thirty-seven and thirty-eight. They are text amendment one seven zero one one. Amending title twenty-seven of the Lincoln Municipal Code by amending section twenty-seven point sixty-three point one ten relating to the approval of a special permit for garden centers in the AG zoning district to provide that the city council may allow more than one freestanding sign per frontage for garden centers when two or more tenants slash lessees operate the garden center on behalf of the owner and the tenants lessees have separate entrances along the same frontage. And repealing twenty-seven point sixty-three point one ten as hitherto existing. And we also have special permit zero six zero two two A, application of William Allen LLC to amend special permit zero six zero two two to allow a garden center operated by two tenants lessees of the owner to have two freestanding signs on South Fourteenth Street with one sign located at each tenant lessey entrance on property generally located at one zero nine zero one South Fourteenth Street.
Hello, I'm Tony Persons. I'm with Nebraska Sign Company. We applied for the, for the special permit amendment as well as the, the request for the, the text amendment, so I'm here to offer her answer any questions you may have.
Questions? appear to be none, thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item, or these two items? Next item, please.
All right, next we have a public hearing ordinance third reading, item thirty-nine. Change of zone one seven zero one one, application of Roger H. Swisso revocable trust for a change from AG Agricultural to R three residential on property located at North Forty-ninth and Alvo Road.
Hi, I'm Roger Swisso, thirteen fifty-four Pelican Bay Place, Lincoln, Nebraska. And I'm requesting a change of zone from Ag to another phase of housing out at North Bank Reserve.
Okay, questions for Ms. Swisso? Jane?
I think we, last time you appeared before us, we had a few questions about some of the drainage concerns that were brought to our attention by the neighbors, and I think you were going to come back to us with more information on how you have mitigated some of those circumstances.
Yes, we've actually, most of this water was caused by sump pumps. There was a hill there that we had cut down and evidently the water table was quite high there and they were pumping a lot of water out and their backyards were not drying enough, where they could hardly mow them. And we took and have run the water towards the front, the street side, and we're planning to install a pipe or to pick up this water and dump it into a storm sewer so it does not dump into the streets for the people there along the west side of Fiftyth Street.
So were you going to, have you submitted these plans and proposals to the planning department so that they would be included in our packet for review, or?
They should be. Lyle Loth with the Rig Engineering designed it. I assume he's submitted it. I don't know that for a fact.
Cindy?
Thank you. Ms. Swisso, thanks for being here tonight. Can you tell me a little bit more about running the pipe under the ground? Because I know that there were, when I was out there, there were sump pumps flowing right into the street, which is of concern. And the, the storm drain is quite a bit down the street from where I was at, probably maybe a block and a half even. So can you tell me what, where exactly the pipe was, is going to be run from?
Right now, it's shown about a foot behind the curb, which would be in the cities right away. And it would be running underneath the drive. We're hoping to bore it so we don't disturb the lawns and the sprinkler systems. And in placing it there, the only thing we've got across is two gas lines that come from the east side of the street, so there would be nothing else that it would pick up.
So you're going to run it under the streets themselves?
What's that?
Driveways. Are you going to run it under the street?
No, no, under the driveways, behind the curb, on the lawn side.
Larry?
Good evening. Yes, we did hear a lot about concerns and we're taking those pretty seriously, and so as you look to continue to develop out here, we hope to be more proactive about preventing some of these problems from happening again. Watershed management has shared that they believe that the area was mass graded and constructed correctly, but that perhaps during the individual final lot grading, there were problems. Do you have any role in the final lot grading?
We don't. Once we sell the lot, basically, it's in the builder's hands. You know, there was supposedly, the lots should drain at the property lines. People put fences in them, people raise them up, putting mulch and stuff like this in them, and then the water doesn't drain where it's supposed to. I've actually got some pictures of one of the lots that's of a concern, if you'd like to see them.
Sure, if you want to show them, but I guess I want to get at this question of if, if, if it's, if there's a way that you're able to partner with folks who are going to do a better job at some of this final lot grading, if that in fact is the source of the problem.
Well, actually, just, see, just, once a lot is sold, I really don't have any say in it because then it's between them and their builder. And what's happened is the landscape people, instead of hauling off a few loads of dirt, have spread it out and not kept the drainage to where it's supposed to be. Here's one particular one. This is Leanne and Pat Johnson's. Does that show up?
There it's going now.
The water is supposed to drain along here. There's a lot up here, and the wa, oops, I've got it upside down. This is an empty lot here. This water is supposed to drain right down this line here. Okay, there's been mulch added here. Now, when you get a big rain, the water's coming across here and cutting across their lawn this way, and of course, it's bringing the mulch and stuff with it. This, instead of the soil staying here, when this house got built, this soil got filled in. Consequently, this house doesn't have any trouble. This one over here, the dirt is so high against this house, it should have never got a occupancy permit issued because it's right up against the siding and the yard is just totally flat. Yet there's plenty of fall, if it was graded properly, that the water would get away from there. This drawing here was from two thousand thirteen, before these houses were built. And you can see where there was a soil along here that come right through here where the water drained out. I mean, we specifically made that soil because we knew there was going to be a problem getting water out of this lot. You know, once we've done it, you know, there's no way that we can, you know, when you sell a lot, it's sold. Had I known they filled it, I would have hollered because we did own the other lot on the other side there, but, you know, by that time, it was sodded and everything else and didn't know there was a problem until, actually, it was only about a year and a half ago the first I heard of a problem.
So Watershed Management also told us that this, you know, it's a very flat area, so there's very little room for error. Is there more you can do to communicate with the people who you don't oversee, but if you've done this work, you can communicate the plans that you've utilized to make it, to mitigate the water problems so that there isn't a lack of communication? Is that something that you're able to do?
Like I said, the first I knew of this was about a year and a half, maybe two years ago on this specific one. I'm actually new in development. This is my first project. If I knew what I know now, it would be different, but I guess I'm learning the hard way. You know, we've got reputable builders out there. You would expect them to know the rules and regulations also. And, you know, it's unfortunate that they're having problems, but most of that is because of poor lot grading.
So now that, now that we're in this sort of phase two and you have more awareness of the complexities of the site, what, what might you do differently this time around if the change of zone is granted?
Well, what we've done with this next phase is the streets are all coming uphill, going higher. And we've picked up the lots, we raised the ground about probably three and a half foot. And in doing this, we're done away with any basements. So there are going to be walkouts instead of basement, so there should be no water issues whatsoever with them. So, but we do have, on Lyle Loth's plan, we do show the pipe coming all the way to Alvo Road and extending all the way to Forty-ninth Street if needed. So if we do encounter any water, because there are a few daylights up that road there yet, that we can pick them, that water up also.
John? Yes, good to see you, Mrs. Swisso. When you do your grading plan as your developer hat, and maybe this is something for building and safety as well here, and I see we have a representative, is there something marked on plans before, you know, you get to the sales to the builders and so forth, so that there would be a written notice to them?
No, there isn't. You know, the city codes say that, you know, the drainage between the houses is supposed to be maintained. But that's the extent of it.
Well, just to follow up, Watershed shared that, that your engineer has agreed to amend the preliminary plat prior to the city approving the final plat for the fourth addition. Is that, are you familiar with this?
I'm not.
Okay. Is Jared Nelson here? Okay.
Jared Nelson with Public Works and Watershed Management.
Thanks for being here tonight. We're just all concerned about making sure people can live peacefully in this area without fear of, of these water issues. Can you speak a little bit about how we can prevent these water issues from occurring in the future?
Yeah, as far as the preliminary plat, we did, we did have a meeting with Riga, the engineer for this development in the end of July, and they're coming in with their final plat, which plats these same lots that's for the change of zone that's before you. And we expressed a few different concerns and said, we would like you to amend the preliminary plat and would like to review that and approve it before we do any more final plating, including final plating these, these lots here. That's, I guess that kind of answers that question that you were just asking.
And that would take place after a change of zone has occurred, correct? That's not this?
Right. Yeah, the change of zone, from my understanding, just changes the land use and then they can't sell the lots until they final plot them, so.
Okay, thank you.
John?
Following up what my colleague just asked, and you discussed, what's been the standard operating procedure? I guess dealing with it be Watershed Management and or building and safety and so forth. Because I can visualize having to build a house, you know, we put the soils in with our builder, but trying to see where that communication is in the case, say, I'm building another house and the, I've already got it constructed, another neighbor comes in and he or she or that family wants to build it up. And then that dumps the water back on me. Something in the system, is it there to protect everybody, to, and not even just protect, but to prevent something like that happening so that the builder and, as you're aware, a developer often creates those lots and then does sell them to different builders, so you do have a number of people, everyone's responsible, yet no one's responsible, it would appear. So how do we protect our citizens, as Ms. Baird was asking?
Well, one of the things that we, that we've asked for to be shown on the preliminary plat is what we call directional flow arrows. Typically, when sites are graded, there's a grading and drainage plan, and on that plan, they have to show contours and how the land is supposed to be developed. And if, if the land is two percent, if it's proposed to be graded at two percent or greater, that's great, you know, that generally is steep enough that the builders can build within that and it, and it works. However, in this instance, out here at North Bank Junction, generally, a lot of the lots are about point five percent, so less than two percent. And in those instances, we're asking for directional flow arrows, so basically arrows that get put on every lot line that indicate where the water is supposed to drain. And so we feel if we get those added on this plan, that it'll communicate to not only, you know, us and you and the developer, and ultimately the builders and the landowners, where that water is supposed to drain. In practice, you know, we do get calls from the public about issues like this, and we go out and we explain, you know, well, here's, here's the grading and drainage plan, which shows the overall site patterns and how it's supposed to drain. And we, you know, encourage people to work with their neighbors to follow those drainage patterns, you know.
I know that back in the fif, nineteen fifties, way before all of you, maybe a couple of us, but my parents, the home we had, it was, the backyard, half of it was way low, and the neighbors on the other side had raised their property, and I remember my father saying, you know, we couldn't raise ours because then we'd be dumping the water back on them, and so apparently there's some common knowledge of that, so every time we had heavy rains, we had a swimming pool in our backyard and in our basement. But I'm just trying to think, with all the developments that have occurred over the decades, has this ever happened in other cases?
Yeah, yeah, it does. There's drainage issues of all shapes and sizes have occurred, it seems like, and there are plenty of places where it's very flat, and so, you know, maybe the drainage is supposed to go through your yard, but then when one person builds it up, it might, you know, push water onto their neighbor and cause a problem and.
I suppose you have successive owner, you have the house built, and then you may have successive residents there and maybe somebody wants landscaping differently, so they, they move the soil.
Yeah, in fact, there's one instance I'm thinking of where a landscaper came out and, and added, you know, plantings and big pine trees in the corner of a lot. Well, that was where there was a drainage soil. That was where the drainage was supposed to go, and so this landscaper essentially dammed it up. And so, you know, meeting with the property owners and showing them, well, this is supposed to be a drainage soil. I recommend, you know, you work with their landscaper and show them that, and a lot of this is simply educating the, the people.
Do landscapers file a plan of what they're doing?
No, no. I mean, generally, after it's final plotted, it's, people can do what they want to do on, and on their land. So that includes landscapers. Landscapers come in and they'll do grading and, and we never see it or hear of it, and they're not required to do anything unless, yeah, unless it's over an acre of disturbance.
Learyn?
Just to make sure we all understand, you've got this review process built into the preliminary plat process, and if in fact these water mitigation issues aren't addressed properly, you can refuse to approve the preliminary plat, correct?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Cindy?
Thank you. Well, it's in this, at this stage in the process, when I was out there last week, it looked like there was dirt already being brought in. Is that appropriate during this stage of the process to have dirt being brought from outside into the, the area that hasn't yet had a zoning change and we haven't seen the plats?
It may be. The preliminary plat was, which had the original grading and drainage plan was approved in two thousand and four, and so they've been allowed to grade it per that plan ever since then. You know, subsequently, as they do that, they'll submit like a SWP plan, and that gives them an authorization to do that.
So are they working from the preliminary, or you're going to be getting another plat?
Well, they, they should be working off the preliminary plat.
Which is two thousand and four? Wasn't that when the, the preliminary plat was done for the area where they're experiencing the drainage problems now?
Yeah, I believe the whole area was originally plotted back then. There have been many amendments over the years. Some of the amendments have adjusted some of the grading and drainage. I think the, actually, the last amendment was in March, and I believe that did make a few changes to grading and drainage as well. And, you know, and I might also add that. You know, and I might also add that as they develop these areas, they'll final plot just pieces of it at a time. And so commonly, you know, they'll do one piece and they'll final plot it, build the houses, and then they'll come back through with the next piece. And so it usually occurs in stages. All the different types of work, including the streets and the storms who are in the grading, it's usually in clusters and, and that occurs throughout, in stages.
And I'm concerned because of the first phase that was built, there seems to be an awful lot of problems. And I don't want to exacerbate those problems and I don't want to see us be able to create new problems in the other areas either, so. That's, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Hopefully, John asked that the staff remain in case there's questions after this.
Good evening, members of the council, I'm Leanne Johnson. I will do this at the end. I had some prepared remarks, but I'm gonna just put them aside based on what was just presented. I'm here tonight as a resident of North Bank Preserve. I have lived there since October of two thousand and fourteen. I absolutely love our neighborhood. It is a little gem in Lincoln, Nebraska that not a lot of people know about. And we really appreciate our representative Cindy Lamb coming out, walking us through this process and helping us understand what we can do to bring our voice to the city council and our concerns. I have to say that when I stand here and hear a developer say, he's learning as he goes, it really, really makes me angry. Because I have put good resources, I've put my hard-earned money into my property, into my home. And I don't want to hear a developer say, I'm learning as I go. Because individuals that are going to be buying lots out there, they don't necessarily know all of the information that we know, who have been living out there for several years. So, learning as you go, when you're a developer, does not sit well. And I hope as city council members, it doesn't sit well with you either. We are residents of this community. We want to be a strong neighborhood out there and we are. We know each other, we take care of each other, we know each other by names, we know each other's kids, we protect each other. And tonight, we're here to share with you stories of what we have been dealing with for a year and a half with a developer who's learning as he goes. That just doesn't, that's not right, that's not what our city wants in neighborhood development. So I'm asking that you consider delaying this zoning until a mitigation plan is submitted, that the developer actually sits down with current residents out there and has conversation about what his mitigation plan is and how we can work together on it. We are reasonable people out there, we are reasonable neighbors. All we're asking for is communication about how he's gonna fix it, put it in writing, and then stay true to his word. Because we've heard a lot of stories the last year and a half. So, I'm asking that the council consider delaying it, I'm not anti-moving, zoning from ag to residential, not at all. We want the development, but we want it to be done responsibly. And we don't want potential buyers to not know that there might be problems. And when you hear that it was plotted in two thousand and four and now it's two thousand and seventeen and the grading is, the grading's probably changed. I mean, I'm not the expert, I'm not the engineer in this. But seriously, I think there needs to be some kind of ordinance or some way that we're looking at. If something's plotted in two thousand and four and in two thousand and seventeen, you're going off the same grading? There, that doesn't equate for me. So I'm just asking you to consider delaying this until we really do get a mitigation plan. I was under the impression that I would be getting a mitigation plan and would know what that included, and I haven't seen that. So, basically, I'm concerned about safety, standing water, water that's draining out into the streets, illegal curb cuts, elevation change, and the bottom line is I want communication with our developer. And I know there's other residents that probably have other issues.
Any questions? Cindy?
Thank you, thanks for being out here, Ms. Johnson. So could you tell us first, what's going on with your particular property?
My particular property, Roger showed up there. It's great, and if he wants to share it, he, he can put it back up because I think it's beautiful. But what the issue is, is our property is at fifty seventeen Becky's Way and there's an empty lot to the west of us. And then there, thank you, Roger, appreciate it. So, I can't talk and point at the same time, but, so this is our property here. What Roger indicated is potentially that what we did with landscaping, which we did not change the grade, okay, is causing the problem coming through our property. In essence, the property next to us has put up a fence, so that probably has created some problems. The empty lot next to us, the grade goes down like this. My biggest concern is when it's sold, what's gonna happen when they start digging basements, moving dirt? That, that's my concern for our property. So we have standing water that comes and stands in this apex right here.
When you say standing water, when it rains?
When it rains, sprinkler systems, primarily rain. Literally, it was probably a little over a year ago, we were having a neighborhood party, the realtors actually stood on our deck and looked at the standing water and said, how long has that been there? And we're like, that's always there. And they said, well, we need to deal with that. Well, two and a half years later, and it still hasn't been dealt with.
And so, and you indicated there's a, a lot that isn't yet developed?
Yeah, right next door to us is an empty lot.
Okay, or i- is that the only lot in that phase that's undeveloped, or are there more?
I don't know, I think that's a part of the first phase, isn't it?
No, second phase.
That's part of the second phase. Well, there's also an empty lot right across the street from us that hasn't sold as well. And you'll hear about that lot.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to testify?
This is what I was talking about, the problem with the builders. There was a swale along this property line. It was filled in before they moved in.
You'll get an opportunity at the end to, to come back and talk to us.
Good evening, council members, my name's Mark Geesler, seventy-four oh one North Fiftieth Street. I'm speaking in opposition to the rezoning of North Bank Preserve until issues are corrected. I'm speaking as a homeowner with a genuine concern for everyone that lives out there, all my neighbors. This is not just my house, it's everyone because we're all a neighborhood. I have concerns with this issue that we as a neighborhood have been experiencing for over two years since I've lived there. Nothing has been done to show things are getting better or any signs of fixing the issues. My first concern in two years that I've been living there, my sump pump drainage has been moved four different times in effort to solve the drainage issues. My backyard will have standing water for periods of time when we get the heavy rain, of course, even just the sprinklers going off due to the, due to that, the area is flat and there's nowhere for the water to flow. The back ten to, the back ten feet to twelve feet of my lot is completely flat, which the water has nowhere to go and it stands, this is after the ground has been saturated, it just sets. I was told by realtor and developer, when purchasing my home, that once the lots around me were developed, they would have a final grade. My neighbors have houses around them and all of them supposedly have this final grade, but yeah, there are still water issues. My second concern, due to this most recent relocation of my sump pump, which is out to the curb, now some of the water drains into the street, which I wasn't notified of when it would happen or when it would be done. Now the water has saturated the area from the sidewalk to the curb and essentially all that's happened is we've moved the problem four different times. So I'm still dan, dealing with standing water. My sump pump runs about every twelve minutes, the water has to flow somewhere. I don't understand why it's so hard or how, I don't understand how or why it's so hard to figure out how to control the flow of water out in our neighborhood. Perhaps one thing that would help is if there are storm sewers in our area, as currently there are only two. And they are ways away from where I live. When I purchased my home, it didn't look like it does now up front. I have some pictures, you'll see, I have, there's standing water in the curb, in the street, every day of the week. It's an eyesore. I didn't buy my house that way when it looked that way. And I can guarantee it, it probably won't sell looking that way. Because if I would've known it was looking that way, I wouldn't have bought it myself. If I ever want to sell, I'm gonna have to understand, the person will probably be turned off right away because of the eyesore. Another issue because of all the standing water, there are bugs everywhere and bug spray is ineffective out here because there are too many of them. My third concern is this proposed road that will be behind my house. The new road is almost level with my windowsill looking out my window, uh, living room window. I'm gonna just hi, summarize this. The ongoing issue in our neighborhood, since I've been there, has been newer houses are going up, are built up higher than existing ones. This is the main issue out here, and no one seems to take the blame for it, but continues to go on. I'm not an engineer, I'm a homeowner. But however, anyone could come out to our neighborhood, would be able to see whose house is older versus the newer ones because you can just tell by who's higher and who's lower. And it's like a totem pole, we're getting everyone else's water. This problem has snowballed and I'm worried because there currently aren't any houses behind me. But this new rezoning will allow for that, I don't know what's gonna happen. I want to stand and be here today that I came and did my due diligence to speak because I'm concerned.
One minute.
My home is a daylight lot, but all the houses apparently behind me will be a walkout, which means that water's gonna be coming some, will have to go somewhere. Supposedly, there's a proposed drainage ditch in between our lots. I have not seen any plans or know what exactly it will look like or who will be responsible for maintaining it. And I guess my overall question would be like, what is it gonna look like and who's gonna maintain it? Because I'd like to know what I'm getting into, I guess, because it hasn't been there. And I would assume it had to be proposed or somewhere in a plan. My number one concern is, when the houses go up behind me, where's the water gonna go? Because I sure don't want it. And I thank you for your time.
Cindy?
Yes, thank you. Did you say you had some photos for us?
Yes, I do.
Can you just put those up on the Almo real quick?
So this is my property right here, this is the back lot, this is the new area that would be where the houses would go. And if you, I doubt you can see it on here, but you can actually see standing water on the curb right there. It probably won't fine tune. There's an area of waters just standing on the back of my lot. It's run the saw already once, and that's why I've moved the sump pump four different times, to try to avoid it. And then when they came and did the, uh, put the, I guess, take it all the way to the curb, this is what they left. My, uh, that's my front yard. And then this is a lot to the north of me that's still undeveloped.
Could you turn that upside down to us? Thank you.
I just now saw a monitor right there. So there's standing water and that's what I deal with on the north of me and to the west of me. And then, here's what I mean by the standing water. It's all my neighbors, I'm the furthest north house, so all the neighbors south of me get my wa, sump pump water. And everybody is going out there, so that's what it looks like, and that's why we have mosquitoes like crazy. And this is a close-up of the drain right by the curb. That's what looks, that's the eyesore I'm referring to. If I saw that, I wouldn't have bought the house, I don't think anyone else would have.
Excuse me, what, you had the drain by the curb or?
What's that, this is, yeah, that's where it's coming out.
From your sump pump?
Sump pump, every twelve minutes, water flows over.
Is that in warm end, I mean rainy, wet and non, I mean sunny weather?
Yeah, I mean, that'll run constantly, I mean, I don't know. Some neighbors, some pumps don't run hardly at all, mine runs like every twelve minutes. So it's a lot of water. And these next two pictures, this, right here is where the road behind my house, this will be Forty-Ninth uh, street, I guess, you can kind of see the markers there. And then I just was trying to highlight, this is how much dirt was brought in. And it's like at least four feet, that's what I'm referring to, it's level looking out my window, uh, living room window. It's like level of the bottom of my seal. And I'm just concerned all that water, it's gonna be a waterfall.
Can you just tell me your address again?
Seventy-four oh one North Fiftieth.
Seventy-four, I'm sorry, seventy-four oh one?
North Fiftieth.
Thank you.
Yep. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next person? Come to this microphone over here.
Hi, my name's Dawn Boldenall, fifty-ten Becky's Way Road. I'm coming, speaking to you guys today on the zoning. I would like, my concern's completed a high-stainer proper, proper fix, not a temporary fix. And I would like the high-stainer fixes need to be placed and working properly before the zone change is completed. I'm talking about this lot right here, this is currently my house. It's very small, but it's right there, and I'm next to an empty lot. You can tell by this picture how flat the lots were before my house was built or anybody, or the townhomes built behind me. And yes, those are my kids. One thing you will find on this lot, I was told by our builder that this electrical box was lower than the sidewalk, which is causing some of the drainage issues. This picture was submitted to the city on zoning change number fifteen zero two six. And during that meeting, I was concerned about the safety issues with electrical box in the utility boxes standing in water, that there was really no storm drains except for the one further down the road and that there was only one entrance into the development. But my biggest concern is this, especially with my kids. As you can tell by this photo, the houses were built five feet above our property and I was wondering how the city could allow this to happen when visually you can see that it was going to cause an issue. This picture also shows that the water does not go over the sidewalk. There was somebody that told us that the water will flow over our sidewalk and into the street, but you can tell that was not the case. This was during the same storm. And look how much water is standing by those electrical boxes and utility boxes. That's not safe in my books. Roger did come out, fix it, his temporary fix was putting a tube down our property lines of our property and the empty property or the unsold lot. And this is what we're dealing with on any day of the week. Which also goes down our curb and goes in front of everybody else's property, house values to the a cover or drain, whatever you want to call it, past our neighbors, which is a long distance away. This photo right here is of a race, recent rainstorm in June of this year. You can tell that it's not, that tubing is not working, there is still plenty of water sitting there surrounding it. We've been trying to work with Roger, we're getting the pointing fingers, it's your fault, it's our fault. We weren't even in the house for, we weren't even moved in when the townhomes were getting built up. So to me, I felt like I was failed by the city, by the land developers and just overall, because I felt like I shouldn't have to deal with this issue, especially after two years of being out there. This is another picture of the electrical boxes and how things are flowing. I guess my concerns are, how can this be safe? Can you guarantee me a hundred percent that no one will get electrocuted, especially my kids?
One minute.
I guess where is the prop builder and safety helping adjacent, is, why isn't building and safety helping adjacent property owners? Who from the building and safety approves the sign-off and then the grading of the elevation of the lots? Why wasn't storm drains put? Why wasn't storm drains put in? Why is there, is there a bylaw or city code that prevents this from happening to any other property owners? Why is it that this is, this additional expense is placed on the adjacent property owners? The city needs to make sure the building and safety codes are being enforced, especially the elevation and grading of lots. I have been dealing with this issue for two years now and it needs to be resolved before somebody gets hurt. I'm not an engineer. However, these temporary fixes is not a solution. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Cindy?
Yes, thank you. Thanks for coming out tonight. I can tell this isn't your natural forte, so thank you very much for coming. I just wanted to ask you about how often that you have that water running in your yard.
It's pretty much every single day. Any rainfalls, um, like there was, uh. I think last Tuesday Roger came out and mowed the empty lot. He missed a strip in back because it was wet. That night, my husband ended up taking a board, dry board. And a tape measure and it showed an inch of water was still sitting back there. So it's from wat- the sprinklers going, it's from the rainfalls. Pretty much anytime. It's saturated. It's not drying up.
And how far away is the storm drain from your home?
Probably about three houses down. So you have a empty lot, uh, on North Fiftieth. You will have the empty lot. You'll have a house that's for sale. Then you have another neighbors and then his house is close to the. Storm drain or the cover, whatever.
And does the water make it down to that drain?
Not all the time.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you very much. Next. Yeah, if anyone else is playing testifying, would you please just come up to the front row up here and have a seat?
I am Cameron Vanaw, fifty ten Becky's Way, um.
Sir, could you repeat your name, please?
Cameron Vanaw. I have some pictures. Here's. One of the house, the property, which is like five feet higher. So you can s- you can see all the water that comes from these gutters. Literally come down to our property and even the other townhouses over here. It all comes down and then it flows back to right here.
There is this electrical service at the prior.
Right here's electrical. Electrical, yeah. Here's another picture without, without my garden I had put in, which I have a foot. From the property over so water could flow. But you can see. That it's just how it slopes. All the water comes down with all these townhomes, comes here and hits this fence and it comes this way. Um, this neighbor here, before some pumps were fixed. His shed. Literally had, um, tilted because of the water sitting. So it just literally brought it down. So like, like this last picture here. My future plan is to put a sh- small shed here so I could put my mowers. And the stuff back there. But if I put a shed. How, how am I gonna get it to not sink from all this standing water? This is the board that I took a picture of that was standing. You can see I'm stretching across the grass that was never mowed. And there's an inch of water sitting in this water, grass, tall grass here. Every time it rains, we have water sitting back there. He's, he's put the drain stuff in there. It's helped a little. But we still have that amount of water constantly every time it rains. So, I don't know what can be done, but something needs to be done.
Questions? Cindy?
Thanks for coming. I, I think when I was out in the neighborhood, um, there was a new piping put in or something. That was coming out over the sidewalk. Was that your property?
No.
In front, oh, okay.
My wife had a picture of just the pipe. It was a cutout. That's what he put in. But when it rains and then a frame, it's just like a geyser just pumping it out. And it can't keep up.
Where does it pump it to?
To the street. And it goes past our driveway. And then that one picture where you saw all the water, just kinda. It's literally gotta go around and down the street and during the winter, it's a skating rink there.
Thank you.
Next testifier, can you come up and use the other microphone here?
Good evening, members of the Lincoln City Council. My name is Kevin Nelson and I reside in North Bank Preserve at seventy three ten North Fiftieth Street. My wife Rachel and I moved into our custom-built home in March of two thousand fourteen. Our general contractor was Mike McGill of Timber Ridge Home, who at the time was the only approved single-family residence builder for the development. During the first spring and summer, we were in our new home. We noticed that our backyard was frequently wet. But we didn't have any issues with water in our finished basement. In December of two thousand fourteen, the house just to the north of our property was finished. The builder of that home was Gerlock Construction, the same contractor you heard previously. Who built townhomes on significantly higher elevations than the homes behind them. The following spring, our backyard was more than, uh, was more wet than the previous spring. And we started getting water into the basement corner, into the northwest corner of our basement, the corner closest to the house that was built. We let our builder know of the issue as part of our one-year warranty. And his assessment that it wasn't his issue to fix because the development had little to no grade anyway. And that the house next door was built higher than necessary to push their water onto our property. In addition, two of the neighbors' downspouts were pointed towards the northwest corner of our house. Little did I know that this began an over two-year battle of finger pointing between our builder, the neighbor's builder and a developer that continues today. For the past two years, I've heard from my builder that the issue is Gerlock's fault because he built my neighbor's house too high. I have heard from Mr. Schichel, Roger and Gerlock that it's my builder's fault because he built my house too low. I've also heard from Roger that I needed to sue my builder. Please keep in mind that I didn't have a choice of builder because at the time, the only option if I wanted to live in North Bank Preserve was to build with Timber Ridge. Roger has also told me that the issue is due to the builders taking out the swale that Roger built along the property lines. First of all, I'm an accountant. I know nothing about water drainage or elevations. I don't even know what a swale is. I had to Google it today. I trusted that the developer and the builder would ensure proper drainage. So I wouldn't have water in my basement and my backyard could be usable. I also trusted that the city building inspector would not approve an elevation that would not drain water away from my home. Secondly, if Roger had put as much time and money into building these swales as he said he has. Wouldn't he have protected them and at the very least made sure that the builder and homeowner knew of their existence and importance? And at the end, if you're interested, I do have some pictures of this, uh, swale before I started building. Today, my wife and I are still dealing with water in our basement as well as the associated mold to our drywall and carpet. We have a three-year-old son and a daughter on the way. Our son loves to play baseball outside, but most nights, tonight included. We are unable to play baseball in our own backyard because it's too wet. I've resorted to mowing the common area behind our house on an almost weekly basis. Because that area has enough drainage to allow my son and I to play baseball on a dry field. My family is tired of the excuses. We wanna plan on how to resolve this problem. For two years now, we have heard stories from Roger and the realtors. Ranging from they will take care of the issue and a hundred percent of the associated costs to there's nothing we can do. Just two weeks ago, Roger left me a message saying that for an estimated three thousand dollars, he can have my backyard regraded. But when he came out to show me what he wanted to do, he admitted it won't solve the issue. Because the neighbor's water will still drain onto my yard and that even when regraded, there won't be enough grade for the water to flow properly. He told me that he would pay for half of the cost of this regrading, but he won't put it in writing. I have asked to meet with the subcontractor who'd be doing the work and that meeting has not yet even been scheduled. In other words, I'm being asked to blindly approve a plan that will not fix the issue. And then trust Roger's word that I won't be stuck with a hundred percent of the bill for a project that won't fix the problem. I'm asking that you vote to postpone approval of this zoning action. Until, until such time that Roger has not only addressed, but fixed my drainage issues as well as those of my neighbors. Thank you for your consideration of this manner, matter. I'd also like to point out that all of the drainage that comes out of people's sump pumps that's being pumped to the front of their house. Is all coming past my house and creating one hell of a skating rink.
Cindy?
Did you, you say you had some pictures you wanted to show us?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Hopefully these will work. This is a picture of my house before it was even, the basement was even dug. This was about a week prior. The house you're looking at here that's being built is Leanne Johnson's house. And this is supposedly where these swales existed and there was supposed to be a swale down the property line. Well, this picture's right on the property line. I don't see a swale. If there was a swale put there at one point, it was taken out as part of the street construction. In addition, if all these swales had been put in back when he said they did, wouldn't there be grass in this picture and not dirt? So keep in mind, this is, you know, before construction of my house. Furthermore, the house next to me on this picture is flat. As it sits today, it is far from flat.
Sir, when you say flat, you mean the lot is flat or?
Yeah, you can kinda see, um, across there, it's, it's, you know, level. But as it sits now, there's a house that sits next to me and there's a rise that goes up now. Um, that's kinda been the standard when Gerlock builds in this neighborhood. He builds his houses on a hump to force the water rapidly into neighbors' yards, which aren't moving the water rapidly. Here's a picture of the, uh, mold in my basement. And here's a picture of the neighbor's drainage system being pointed right at my, right at my foundation.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next testifier, please.
Hi, my name is Al Ortmeier. I live at fifty twenty seven Becky's Way Road. And I apologize because I just realized that this was happening today. So I have nothing prepared. I am here in support of my neighbors. I come from a small town. This is as close to a small town as I've got. It's beautiful. Um, we were probably. I'd say we're kind of the godfathers of the neighborhood. We are about the fifth people in our, um, environment out there. And it's beautiful. We have eagles, we have deer, we have everything. With every house that goes up. With every street that gets longer, things get worse. And it's sad. We live across the street from Cam and Dawn and their kids play in the street. And at the end of the street, there's about a twenty, thirty-foot pool of water that's there every time it rains. Um, I can't even tell you where the storm drain is on our street. I, you've been out there, Cindy. You know there's not, it's, it's kinda silly. For a new neighborhood like that. I mean, how does that get missed? But like I said, I'm lucky. My house is pretty good. Live right next to Pat and Leanne and they're great. They're great neighbors. There's always been a swamp on the other side of their house. I mean, since we moved there. Anyway, if you have any questions for me, as someone who does not have a house that's affected by, directly affected by this, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. But I'm just here for my neighbors, so.
Questions for Mr. Ortmeier? Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Hi, my name's Pat Cappas. I live at fifty seventeen Becky's Way. I'm, uh, the one that, I'll talk about it here in a second, the mulch and next to Al and the vacant lot. You've heard a lot of stories, a lot of empathy, some of us nervous and. Cause this is new and it's something we don't like to have to do and I'm sure you don't like to have to hear it. But anyway, we're, uh, we're, we wanna get this fixed. The mitigation has to be taken care of before this gets approved. Cause anything further is probably gonna further or, you know, make this a lot, lot worse than it is. And that's our concern mainly. I mean, we are for the development. We want more neighbors. We, we, I think there's thirty, about thirty houses out there and we know everybody by their name. So everybody that comes in enjoys it. We've had neighborhood things and, uh, uh, get along real well. Roger referred to fences. There is one fence next to us that's causing part of the problem. The problem with that fence is his lot drains into it and it runs down the fence onto ours and that's what's causing all the problem. We didn't have any water damage or problem until that house and his lot got filled in with dirt. Roger has told us water won't run uphill. We believe him. But he's not doing anything to make it go downhill. And the thing is, that that lot of his in the corner that causes our problem is he had dirt filled in there to make it even higher and more. And when the house was built, where that was next to Kevin, I wish I had the picture. But anyway. That, that's causing the water to come around. Uh, my, my mulch beds. Slope towards where the swale is supposed to be. It isn't that side of the mulch that's getting the problems, it's coming out to the middle of my yard. So anyway, that's that little issue. And that's not a major thing. I think probably for fifteen hundred bucks, it could be fixed. I don't. I can do it, but I just don't feel like I should be spending it for somebody else's lot. Cause that's gonna be a problem when he tries to sell it. Uh, the grading, it, it's, if you, you heard, uh, from Mark, that new road's going up. Uh, Roger mentioned it's three and a half to four feet deeper or higher. It's gonna go into a ditch in the back of the, all those houses there. And my question is, what's the ditch gonna be? Before you approve it to residential, is it rock? Is it cement? Is it dirt? Is it, uh, culverts buried? We don't even know and he doesn't even know. He's told us that. He, we have meetings with Roger. We've talked to him and he's promised us things. They don't get done. That's probably a part of the concern is this, will the rest of this development get done correctly? So, you know, a little bit of a hold on it isn't gonna kill anybody. To get the other things fixed up so we can move forward and have a nicer development out there than what we currently have. Um, the common areas that, uh, he eventually wants to turn over to the ho- homeowners. Um, they're, they're wet. You can't mow them half the time because it's so wet. I don't think they're draining right. And when the things like that don't come up and drain right, my question is the city got the elevation right? Or is that a building and safety program that isn't getting the elevations on these houses inspected? We're making an assumption out there and I think it is fairly accurate though, that they're just approving them. They aren't doing anything with that. So Roger has told us, Roger currently and the, the realtors say there's two builders they'll use. Roger says, I only want quality buildings, builders out here to make this a nice neighborhood. And we thank him for that and we think that's great. But the quality builders are causing the problems and they're, they're Rogers guys that he's handpicked. And so when we ask him, what do we do? He says sue the builders. I'm not getting it. That just contradicts it. So, um, someone along the line there where the elevation is done right, I'm sure we gotta live with it, but. My question is, if you've got a fairly level field is what we heard from planning. If you got a pla- fairly level field, why don't we have storm drains out there? You need more storm drains to get the water off the streets and out. Otherwise they sit. And I, I addressed this to, uh, them in August of sixteen. I know at the planning meeting when this all kinda started, they said they never heard from us, but I had an email. Um, from, uh, is it Cheryl? From you, actually. So anyway, um, you know, I didn't think, well, there's anything we can do. Okay, um, I'm the last one, so that's a good thing. Uh, so where are the storm drains? We need to know why, um, we aren't getting better drainage on the individual properties, uh, from his handpicked develop, our builders. Um, so if, if you can, we'd ask you to delay and see what you can do to get these first things fixed before we move on. Maybe complicating the problems that we currently have. And, and I don't know, I guess the city owns the streets and I would be concerned about the ice in the water that builds up on those. Uh, for long terms. And, and there's other people that had some problems or minor, they didn't wanna come out. There's older people out there, there's families. But, uh, you know, we're tired of having our neighborhood gatherings and everybody's talking about water. So hopefully after this, it can be addressed, we can get them fixed and move on. So thank you for yours.
Cindy?
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so you mentioned an email. You had an email exchange with somebody from?
I, I did, um, Mr. Nelson. It was in August of, uh, sixteen it came in. He just addressed individual lot stuff, but that's probably where I left it at that moment. But, uh, I'd, uh, I can get it to you. I, I sent it to someone and. Didn't get there or whatever and I thought.
Oh, that's fine. I just was wondering about the date because I know there was some conversation that, that maybe the, um, developer didn't, didn't know anything about these problems.
Yeah, planning commission people did, or wastewater did, um, it was August nineteenth was the date. I got it on my phone.
And I think that you and I spoke about a meeting that involved the folks from, uh, wastewater. Ben Higgins out there in your neighborhood, correct?
After the planning, after the planning commission, um, Ben came out at the request, uh. Of the engineering firm and stuff came out. And we showed and talked and went through a bunch of what we just did here and, uh, not, you know, nothing really was done. You know, there was a result of, and Mark alluded to it, that Roger said he would do something with the, the sewer line or the, the sump pumps. And he did, but it wasn't something that was a good fix.
Okay. And then I think there was some discussion about the sump pump is not supposed to go out to the street.
Yeah, and that's there right now out to the street. I'm not sure if it was explained, but he brought them out and then he have a pop-up, uh, drain. And then it just drains and goes over the curb. and then it just drains and goes over the curb. And it's an eyesore, one thing, and so he's got water there, so that needs to be corrected.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just, just to clarify, uh, sewer was mentioned. This isn't a sewer problem.
Not a sewer problem, I'm sorry, that was a mistake. Yeah, it's not sewer drains, it's storm drains and then some, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Want anyone else to testify? All right, Mr. Suiso, as the applicant, you have the opportunity for one brief rebuttal.
Staff questions?
We can do those after, oh, his, he gets to testify.
Yes, in trying to solve the water issues where the backyards were so wet, we brought the water out to the street. They knew not, want us dumping the water into the street. We were presently taking prices on boring that line like I talked about behind the curb. And all these lines that are coming to the street now on the west side of Fiftyth, which will be picked up and dumped into there, which will dump into storm sewer. So, I mean, that is in the works.
All right, questions? Carl?
Yeah, Mr. Suiso, um, we've heard from, I think unanimously from those testifying here, that, that they would like a delay. Is that, uh...
I don't know.
Is that possible for you?
Well, yeah, it wouldn't kill us, but I mean, I don't know what bearing, uh... We're talking a totally different project than what this is. I, I mean, you know, once, I don't know how I can go on private property and, and how, you know, it's basically the people that graded the yards, when they finished building the houses that didn't grade it properly, is why they're having the water problems. You know, where that fence is at, there should've been a swale there. And it's not there. How, that becomes my problem, because the people didn't grade the yard right when they finished grading, I guess I don't understand that. Uh, the Vodenoffs, they're, that's a different story. That one there was my problem. What happened is, you know, it was draining in the backyard, and then the street elevation, in the next phase, it raised it up a little bit, and that, the water didn't get out of it. I had talked to them about going in and tearing up their yard, putting a swale beside their house, because there is plenty of fall to take it out to the street, which the water would still run out, same as it does into piping, just that it would come out faster. They didn't want the swale behind their house. And you can ask them, because I did propose this. That's when I put the pipe in with the drains coming out to the street. They have, uh, very little sump pump water. I don't think there's, kicks in very much, because it's, where there's, is discharge it on the ground, it's not muddy all the time. But, uh...
They indicate that, that there are few, if any, storm sewer outlets, and...
Right, there aren't. Everything is, uh, it's flat out there. You know, we've got a half percent slope on all the streets. And from the, from where the low point of the street is to the bottom of the outlet of the storm sewer, there's probably only two foot, four inches of depth. I mean, we're that flat. You know, ideally, we should've had more slope on it, should've been raised up a little bit higher. But, I mean, the house, you know, like the one that they were talking about where their backyard is out draining, there's plenty of room that it could've drained if it would've been, the builders would've graded the yards like they should've been, because, I mean, if, there's plenty of elevation to make it work. But it's hard to do once you've got a fence in there, you've got landscaping in there, you've got sprinklers in there, you've got sod in there. How do you go in and correct something that the builders didn't do right?
Okay, there was also a question about, uh, between the existing, there were some of the existing homes and the newer homes that are going in, that there will be a ditch going through there.
No, that's why we took the water to the street. In the backyards, here again, where there's only half percent fall. You know, so, you know, there really no way to put a ditch in. But in a normal rain, you're gonna have some water standing for a little bit, but it shouldn't be very long, because, I mean, it will drain, it, or soak in the ground, one of the two. But the new houses going in should affect these, no more than, there, no more water come from the new houses going in than what's coming there right now, because you've got the same amount of slope that's coming to this area as what you will have to, have after it's developed.
Cindy?
So, I, so I'm, you're planning to take the water to the street on the other side as well?
Well, it's, it's, you know, the lots are already raised up. So, all you've got is the back slope of the lot, which you've already got right now today, coming that way. So, there's not gonna add any water to it. You know, and here also, we did show on this drawing that Lyle is turning in for this drain. If we did have water problems, we're gonna bury another line out there by the curb before the houses get built, so that the sump pumps, if they have problems, could tie into it. It, it's mainly the sump pumps that's been kicking out so much water on, the ones on the north side of the street, or the west side of the street has caused the problems.
So, 'cause I was out there on a dry day, and there, it was wet. I mean, I was out, there wasn't a storm, I'm sorry.
That was before the sump pumps got taken to the street.
No, I, I was actually out there, there were sump pumps shooting water into the street. So, yeah, this was just a few weeks ago, so, um...
And then that was probably lawn sprinklers.
And then my understanding was that, um, that Mr. Higgins had informed you that you shouldn't be bringing those sump pumps out to the, out of the curb cut without at least approaching planning department first, and then you went ahead and did that anyway.
I did, yes.
Okay, and so...
They've got, they've got, people all across the city of Lincoln have got drains coming out there. And we figured on picking ours up with the storm sewer.
So, I am a little concerned that he told you, and then you went ahead and did it anyway. More than a little concerned, probably.
We were trying to help the residents out, and I guess it didn't work.
Okay, so, um, I did wanna ask you about the builders. Are you using the same builders for these next phases? Is that your plan?
Yes, uh, and they are quality builders. You know, we are gonna be trying to work with them more on elevations and stuff. You know, once a lot's sold, I really don't have anything really that I can say about it. I can make suggestions, but I can't control what they do, because I don't own the ground after their lots are sold.
So, you, well, you do still own quite a bit of property in this neighborhood. It sounds like you have some empty lots in the neighborhood that these...
There's two empty lots, is all there is.
Okay, and one of the concerns was on the lot, the corner lot, um, at Becky Lane.
Right, and, and that's the one that, there should've been a swale where that fence is at and their landscaping is at, that's not there. And so, the water's cutting across their lawn catty-cornered instead of going down the property line where it should be going.
So, and so, um, are you the only one that can approve builders?
Uh, actually, uh, my realtor is the one that has been selecting them. I've had nothing to do with the builders. I don't, I don't know them. He's the one that has gotten the, the builders for me, for the development. Basically, he's, uh, they're selling the lots. Most of the houses are designed by the builder and the realtor. I don't have any input into the houses.
And are, are you the one bringing the dirt in from outside?
Well, it's from on the same property, yes.
I'm sorry?
It was on, from on the same property.
So, I, I guess I'm wondering, how are we, how, how do you propose that we take care of these folks? And to what degree are you willing to work with them before we start approving more housing going out there? And then, a few years from now, here we are with a multitude of people with similar issues, or these folks with worse issues?
I had actually offered to pay for half the cost of fixing it before today. I'm not sure that I'm still going to do that now. Because I was trying to work with them, and this is the thanks I get for doing that. I, you know, I, yeah.
Jane?
Mr. Suiso, can you tell us exactly what your engineers are recommending? Because, um, they should have the right tools to be able to determine the appropriate fix. Maybe it's, it's putting in those stormwater drains and creating the appropriate drainage ditches. I don't know. I'm not an engineer, but I've done a lot of construction, so I rely on engineers to give me guidance on the appropriate remedies for situations like this. So, what have they been telling you? And have you, you know, I was hoping to see some drawings at this meeting that you have a mitigation plan already in place to address some of these concerns. And, and you can understand why the neighbors are, are very reluctant to see any further development go forward if you don't have any, uh, engineering drawings that shows them and everyone else that their, these drainage issues are gonna be dealt with going forward. So, what are, what are the engineers telling you about a remedy for the existing lots? That you do somehow have some oversight and, and grading? And it sounds like there is some selection and restriction process on, on the builders that they are permitted to choose.
Well, for the existing lots, other than tearing out a fence and taking the sod out and grading it like it should be, there's, is no remedy. There's not enough fall anyplace that you could bury a storm sewer, uh, and make it drain. I mean, it's just that the dirt was graded wrong when they finished grading the house.
And that's what the engineers have told you and, and provided that documentation to the city?
Yeah, along Fiftyth Street there, you know, we're gonna bury that line to pick up the sump pumps, because the sump pumps is a big factor there that's causing a problem. On LeAnn and Pat's lot, that's strictly an issue of being the lot graded wrong, because there's plenty of fall from the empty lot in their house to the back to drain it. And the same thing with Kevin's. I mean, the fall is there, it's just that the builders didn't haul off four or five truckloads of dirt. They spread it out instead of hauling it off and getting the drainage that should be there. Kevin's house, the dirt is right up against the siding. I don't know how it even got passed for occupancy permit, because you're supposed to have six inches of fall in ten foot away from your house to meet code. And he doesn't have it. I mean, his whole yard is just virtually flat until it gets to the back, and then there's all kind of fall. Well, not all kind, but there's a good foot and a half.
So, when you, when you sell the, the lots, don't you have language in the, the sale documents that specify that this is a grading that is required for these lots to help assist with?
No, there's nothing like that in the contract.
Okay, any other questions, John?
I appreciate your comments on that, because I was sitting here listening to testimony. I was just wondering if it wouldn't be possible, as you sell the lots, as you're the developer, to the builders or whomever, that there couldn't be language in there that the plan of landscaping and, or, not landscaping itself, but what you've done on grading, wouldn't need to be followed to protect the whole, uh, plot or whole, whole area?
We could probably, uh, work with Lyle and put some elevations on each lot, property line or something. That's Lyle with Rig Engineering, that's who I've been working with. Uh, I mean, basically, the, the, the grading plan matches what was submitted and approved by the city. I mean, the, the thing...
From the existing homes or this new?
Oh, for the existing homes. And everything worked and drained before the houses were built. And they come in, and by not hauling off a few loads of dirt, have taken away the drainage. Kevin's house is lower than one, what happened, some got eight-foot basements, some got nine-foot deep basements. They put a nine-foot deep basement in, so they jacked the house up higher. Uh, of course, that pushes the water on the neighbors. And, uh, his is really low compared to the one beside of it. It probably shouldn't have been a nine-foot basement in there, you know? But I don't know how, you know, unless somehow in a contract you could list how high the elevation can go, but, uh, but, I mean, here again, it should've been draining. Each, between each house, you're supposed to have a swale, and the water's supposed to go to the property line between the houses instead of cutting across the yard. And this is what's not happened.
Okay, thank you very much. There's some staff questions that Mr. Camp has.
Could we have Building Safety come forward?
Thank you, sir.
And Planning, eventually?
And there might be some for Law too, on what could be done in documents.
Chad Blaham, Building and Safety.
Thank you for waiting and being here. I think you've heard most of the testimony on this subject.
I, I, I did, I, I did. I didn't come down here for the, for the beginning of it, uh, your initial. And I actually know next to, nothing about the, the property. I was here for the next couple of items, but I just happen to be here with some fortune, I guess.
Well, do you have any thoughts or comments on what you've heard on this situation? And as things go through your department on plan review, whether it be by the developer and the whole...
Well, I, uh, I tried to organize my thoughts a little bit on this, from what I know about the development process. And like I said, I know next to nothing about this specific. I haven't been out there, I haven't seen any of that. It looked like a fairly flat, um, section of ground, and those are always tricky for both the designers, um, at the beginning part, and then the builders when they get the lots, because what looks great on the preliminary grading plan, you got these nice neat lines and arrows that shows where the water's supposed to go. Once you start digging, it's, it's, it ends up a little bit different. Because those grading plans don't take into account foundation, uh, spoil. They don't take into account, uh, different landscaping, maybe that the builder wants to put in for the homeowner. They don't take into, uh, many of those, those things into account. So, by the time we get there, some lots do have, um, uh, drainage arrows or maybe a lowest, lowest opening if it's next to a, uh, floodway or flood plain, that sort of thing. So, those are some things that our department can look at. And I don't know if these are areas that had those or not. I don't know what the final plots look like, don't really know anything about it. You know, our guys are, our building inspectors are very talented at what they do, but, you know, they're typically ex-framers. They're not landscape people, but they know enough to look at, um, to try and look at which direction the water is going. And, um, they try their best to work with the builder to maximize, um, uh, a best-case scenario once they're out there. However, they don't have any control over what happened previously, how the, how the land was masqueraded to start with before they started building. And they don't have much control over, um, you know, what the builders choose to haul off or not. They just try and do the best with what, with, uh, the work that is there. And, uh, I heard mention about the, um, the requirement, uh, six inches in, in ten feet or whatever that the slope falling away from the foundation was, and it's not the siding, it's the foundation. There was a reason, and I don't know if this is the case, but there was a recent one where we had to go out there, and that was the complaint, that the soil went up to the siding. Well, if you peeled the, um, look behind the, uh, the vinyl siding, you had about a full six inches of foundation underneath that siding. And so, they did meet the, did meet that, that grading requirement. Have no idea if that's the case here. But our inspectors do try and look for that, and, I mean, yeah, keep in mind, they are the, they're the, the, the last step from this, in the city's process with the development. It starts, I mean, uh, good drainage starts with good design to start with. And then it starts with accurate grading based on that good design. And then it starts on builder responsibility to, um, try and continue that grading. So, um, I guess, if there's anything other, any specific questions you'd want to know? I mean, we can, if, if, if the desire is to have city take a much closer look at these grading issues, I mean, every, every, every step that's added slows down the building process. We can call in engineers to come in and get their transit levels to, um, to look, to look at some of these grading elevations. We can, um, maybe require, uh, more certi, certifications on the builder's side of things, since we don't employ a certified, uh, surveyor, or licensed surveyor. There's a number of things that have been looked at over the years, but in, by and large, the, the process that we have works most of the time for most developments.
Go ahead.
Chad, I have a question for you. So, when a developer brings their plans and proposals to you, uh, typically, don't they have all the civil engineering done for the development, how the streets are gonna be laid out? Where the storm water drains are going? That will be in conformance to what is probably good design? And certainly, if you know the elevations of a flat piece of ground, that means you have to take extraordinary steps or additional steps to make sure that water has a way to move if it's adding additional storm water. I guess what is, is so surprising to hear is that these problems are, are pretty prevalent, you know, in this development, and it seems like... And it seems like they knew from the beginning, not not necessarily the the property owners, but the developer and the builder because it's it's flat ground. And so I I go back to what are the civil engineering engineers for this development? What have they done? What are they proposing for the future parcels that they would like to 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 sell? I mean, if they're not mitigating the current problem or if they didn't have a good civil engineering design, which you said it starts with a very good design on how to move water in over flat surfaces, it doesn't sound like there's very many guarantees for these future lots that they would like to develop if there's not a good plan in place. And I I feel that it doesn't sound like there is a good plan in place and it doesn't sound like there was a good plan in place working with the the flat the flat ground from the very beginning. I don't know because I keep saying I'd like to see some plans. I'd like to see the mitigation plans, but we have not seen any any civil drawings. And I doesn't sound like your department has either, or have they?
Well, we don't. I mean, we're the last. The the development drawings happen well before we we get, we see them. They happen through the the preliminary plat or CUP, whatever whatever planning document takes place and those are reviewed by by some folk.
Here we go. So I I have a question because I've had this conversation with some people in in planning and in stormwater. So it comes down to this as far as I can tell. You tell me if I got this idea wrong. When the the area is plotted and it's time to say, okay, we can build these lots, there's a watershed management plan, correct? And that's the last time the city controls water. Is that right?
I think that is a generally speaking, that is accurate as far as the process is concerned.
So after that, when people start builders start building, we don't go in as a city and say, have you followed the watershed management plan as you built this home?
Correct. We do have a a building occupancy. There's a building permit process, but there
Watershed management doesn't go back in and say, yes, we certify that you have followed the plan that was in place.
That is accurate.
Okay, so basically, what I'm hearing is the city has failed these people. And what I would like to see is the city professionals, that's you and your departments, to make a plan so that we can avoid this kind of stuff in the future. Because we make plans and then we don't follow them. And and if we do follow them, it seems to be by accident because nobody goes back and inspects to see if it's done.
A couple of comments on that, and and I think there might be also some more information that might help this discussion right now. One is that to a degree, we do depend on private contracts and citizens to do the right thing in the case of building lots and and grading them in a in appropriate way, generally in compliance with that initial grading plan. So I think we need to keep that in mind that there there is some expectation on the private side that they do what they're supposed to be doing. Having said that, I I do think that there is perhaps some more information that we can provide you. And Jared has that information as far as discussions that have been going on with Riga, the engineer involved in this project. And that has to do with trying to deal with moving forward with any further development in this area, doing it the right way.
Solve this tonight?
I would say that we probably are not going to be completely solving the issue tonight.
So the request of the what do you think of the request of the homeowners to delay this until we can look at a plan? Because Jane's right, we haven't seen anything in writing.
And actually, it is part of that discussion. I I actually would want to bring Jared back up here because I think the part of this is understanding when plans can come in.
I think David, when we last had the discussion and we talked about the delay, it was with the intention that they bring forward to us a remediation plan and and a program before we would take up this matter and consider it again until there was something in place. And I thought that that was they were working with the planning department and
I think there has been work done and Jared can speak to that in more specifics, but I think the main purpose of delaying and having this hearing now was to make sure that there's an opportunity for the residents and homeowners to have their chance at a at a public hearing. So there there still was purpose for tonight, so.
Oh, no, no, I'm I'm not arguing that, but from our perspective, you know, we we wanted to hold the public hearing open to get their their input. But in addition to that, we wanted to see the remediation plan that was stamped and certified by a civil engineer that this is going to make progress on the problems we're seeing.
And I will hand off to Jared now.
So we 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 don't have a plan that's certified and stamped by any professional yet. There has been a conceptual plans. I guess I'll bring up two points. One is that there has been a plan, a conceptual plan submitted by Riga, the developer's engineer, to install a drain behind the back of curb as Roger was describing. And that would run parallel to the street so that all the people could tap their sump pumps into that. And that would alleviate the issue of the water getting out into the street from the sump pumps. It would alleviate the issue of the water running down the street from the sump pumps. It would go into that pipe and then that pipe would dump into either inlet or a drainage, a big drainage ditch that's there. So they submitted a conceptual plan and we've looked at that and it looks good and that's that's all we've gotten so far for that. The second point was that I met with Riga, you know, they've submitted a final plat to final plat these same lots. And I met, you know, in reviewing that and I was at the Planning Commission and heard that a lot of the same issues. So we met with Riga at the end of July and I said, we're not going to approve this final plat. In fact, we want you to amend your preliminary plat and here's some issues. And I could go, I could go into those if you want, but essentially, we said, there's issues. You need to show us how you can address those. We have not seen that administrative amendment. They have not yet addressed those issues or shown us how they will address those issues. We're still waiting.
Okay. Other questions? Thank you very much.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'd like to hear sort of if you're still waiting, what is your recommendation to the council about proceeding?
I mean, I think that the change of zone just just approves the land use. And so you could approve that tonight and we'll still, you know, wait. We'll still will not approve the final plat until we get their revised preliminary plat and are and are okay with it.
I would agree with that.
And that will come back before us or what does that?
The final plat would not come back before the city council would go through administrative process at that point. But that the understanding is that there's this necessary information that's needed for that to be approved.
Cindy?
So but meanwhile, they're moving dirt and they're working on the off of the plat that hasn't been approved. The final they we don't have a final plat and if they're moving dirt in their in their building in there, we don't have a final approval yet, even though you're waiting for it, there's work going on. I I just have some concerns about that. If we if we delay, as they've asked us to, if we delay the zoning for land use, then my understanding is that there shouldn't be residential building going on there until there is such a zoning change.
Well, I I think we're talking about two different things here, but there's a there's there are different phases. So they have approval for building out the first phase that is that's already in place. It sounds like there's a few lots that are still unbuilt. What we're dealing with with the change of zone right now is for the next phase. And what Jared referred to is that there also is a final plat that needs to be approved as well before they can take that step for further construction of of houses. As far as grading is concerned, because there's a preliminary approval out there for the entire development that just like initially, the grading was done with before there was a final plat, there's there's some ability to do some of that work. I don't know the details of what is happening out there, but there is, I'm I'm assuming there's some type of dirt movement that's based on the the other approvals that have happened.
Okay, Benny and then John, then Cindy again.
I'm sorry, I have one more question. Jared, I'm sorry. Do you have a do you have a time estimate for the the drain that you were talking about the at the curb?
Uh, no, I don't believe we received an estimated time.
Quick, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. If there's a preliminary plat approval, they're moving dirt around. If that doesn't mean they can start building without your approval of the finalized plat, right? They can move dirt all day long and until you get in a plan that you think will fix the problem or mitigate water on your neighbors, you won't sign off on it and nothing will get built. Is that fair for me to say? Thank you.
Hey, John?
We we've got two situations here. One, we have the current homeowners who residents who are there. And then we're talking also about the future expansion of this area. Regarding the citizens there, and I believe there are total two unbuilt lots that I
But that's what we heard.
Is there a way, and this might be for building safety again, but is there a way to earmark those so that when they come through the process that they get closer scrutiny for any landscaping or what have you? So that within this current plat that it doesn't aggravate or contribute to further flooding to these people?
I mean, with with within the system, it's technically possible to flag a a property or at least a an application.
They have to get building permits. They'll have to get a building permit.
Right. It's like if if it come if it comes to us, it's 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 feasible or it's possible to flag that that application and put a hold on it so that it doesn't doesn't move forward. However, we don't currently require final grading plans, which is what would be required for us to have somebody look at, probably be looking at some other folks with that expertise to make sure that it meshes with the the rest of it. And also, you'd have to in order for that to be worth much, you'd have to have it, probably have it surveyed to 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 verify what the actual elevations are out there to determine whether or not that final grading plan was worth.
Okay, Larry?
Give me a second. I wasn't I was just by flagging, I meant that through that we have an an extra approval to make sure it has the proper landscaping and that the builder and or first owner know that or some else.
I think the point I was trying to get to earlier is there's no such mechanism in city code.
They have to get a but I'm asking from the city's standpoint to not let the present situation get more aggravated. And so through the planning, through the building permit process for a home, for the builder.
But all I'm saying is there's no, once the watershed management plan is approved for the whole development, there is no requirement for the city to require anything on watershed management for an individual lot to be to be built.
To to answer your question, yes, it would be possible for us to put a hold on that application if, you know, we're I guess told to do so. I don't know that there's anything in our in our code that really gives us the the authority if if they meet all of the other requirements for for us to not issue that permit. If if you've got city services and a paved street and it's a platted lot, it would be difficult, I guess legally for us to not issue that permit if they've met all of the requirements.
Wouldn't they? Wouldn't that owner, and I apologize, but I'm I'm thinking back to growing up and my father just saying we couldn't build up because we and the neighbors could sue us because we put water on their land. Would it not be similar case here with these other two lots? If anything, if they didn't do proper drainage, that they could be liable to the existing neighbors. Not that they they got a nice family of people there. They don't want to sue one another. But I'm trying to get the buck to stop somewhere.
I think the part of this might be a legal question formally at this point, but that does fall more into the the private side matter of you don't want this to happen, but a property owner, one property owner, property owner A, going in the litigation with another property owner because of what they did. I mean, that's that's the area that we go into in that sense. It's not not where we want things to go, but that is generally speaking, what would be needed from for some type of resolution on that side. It's a private matter at that point.
Larry?
Going back to kind of Planning Commission days, recalling developments that are in the floodplain and how they have to build up to a certain height. I can't help but think of that as I see these photos of newer homes being constructed at higher elevations. You know, it made me wonder if this is this area part of the floodplain or what? That's one question. The second question is, you mentioned this is sort of a private sector issue, but what what do we do to try and prevent, you know, private homeowners from from causing, you know, collateral damage for each other by the elevations that they choose? Is that watershed? Is it planning? Can you help us understand where where we work to? I mean, clearly, this could happen anywhere pretty much in the city. How why is it happening here?
I could probably speak to both of those. A lot of this area, if not most all of it, was in the floodplain. And they raised it to get it out of the floodplain. There's a process you can go through through FEMA to get the official FEMA map changed once you do that. So, yeah, I mean, that it's not in the floodplain anymore, but at one point it was, and that could likely explain some of the, you know, frequent sump pumps running is there's probably some, you know, black dirt down beneath some of the houses.
And I just to add to what Jared just said, I mean, that there is also, if if that is to happen, there is a mitigation plan for that so that and that would have been done initially as well. So it's not like they just take it out of the floodplain and use up what flood storage. It's got to be mitigated in some way.
But did that happen here? I mean, this doesn't look like an area maybe that's properly lifted out of the floodplain. Can you speak to that?
This specific area, they they raised the lots to be up up out of the floodplain. And they submitted a a certification that each of the homes would have a specially designed sump pump system essentially to help, you know, so that the water groundwater wouldn't get into the basement. And so that pro there's a process when they when someone takes a land out of the floodplain, you can get a letter of map revision from FEMA. And so you have to submit that documentation to FEMA. And when it's based on fill, when someone's bringing fill in, the city, we have to look at, review that and and sign off on it. And so in this instance, they that was the process. They did a LOMAR letter of map revision based on fill. It came through to the city. We reviewed it and we asked that a building restriction agreement be placed on all of those lots, stating that they're not allowed to build their basements beneath a certain level. And and the city does that so that we can be sure that those properties in the future will be reasonably safe from flooding. And so that process was followed and and there is a building restriction agreement on those lots with that with those details.
Do you think they got the elevations correct? I mean?
That's that's something that that's something that is checked and I I would speculate that they are. You know, that's something that we check throughout the process and building and safety, as Chad mentions, you know, when there is a lowest floor elevation on the plan, they'll check that. And your second point that you brought up, could you remind me again with that?
Well, I mean, what do you do when you have, you know, people living next to each other, building at different elevations? I mean, that seems like that's just a recipe for trouble.
Right. So within the city, we don't have explicit code to my knowledge that that talks about that. It's like when we go out and and meet with people, we explain this is a civil matter. You should work with your neighbors to resolve this. And I I'm not a lawyer. I don't know, but I my understanding is that generally case law dictates that you can't change the course of water onto or off of a property.
Right. I I had a lengthy discussion with Ben Higgins on this subject. And the fact of the matter is, as I was explaining to me, is if my established home and my neighbor's established home, my neighbor does landscaping that pushes water onto my property, there is no city ordinance that applies. None. Whether it's a new construction or an addition or a landscaping change, the city has nothing, no hook to hang our hat on when it comes to this kind of matter. And that's where I think I mean why I say the city has failed people. We don't have an ordinance where we can enforce water management at the at the at the homeowner level, period.
I think there's some common law principles, though, that
But they don't apply to city ordinances. That's what I'm trying to say. People can sue each other, but the city can't can't give them relief. We don't have any ordinances.
If I may, there's also a consideration here that, and this has come up as as part of this conversation, which is as part of our process for approval, we go through and we try to be as efficient as possible. And and to some some degree, there is that balancing act between how we get approvals done according to our established regulations, obviously, and but being efficient at the same time. And and the good news is that this type of severe situation like this doesn't happen very often. But when it does happen, it doesn't help those private property owners very much to feel any better about that. But we do, we do get into the the situation of trying to process our approvals so that we can get building to happen as quickly as possible as well. So there is definitely a balancing act here. And if we're going to talk about some type of intervention here at the last minute, there is going to be a cost to to that as well on some side or all sides, whether it be in time, whether it be in the cost of doing individual surveys, which is very costly, which we try to avoid that as well. So just put that out for consideration. So just put that out for consideration, too.
Okay, other questions? Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
That concludes our public hearing. We can move into the voting session. Public hearing ordinance's second reading, our items nineteen through thirty-eight. Public hearing ordinance's third reading, item thirty-nine, change of zone one seven zero one one, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
We, we need a second so we can delay this. Moved by Jane, seconded by Carl. Discussion, Cindy?
Thank you, um, I would like to move for a delay on this. Um, I would like-
That's what we need.
Thank you, because I always go right into my discussion. Thank you so much for-
And, and could you define your delay?
Yes, I would like to delay for four weeks. I would like to have an opportunity to have an engineering study of some sort, as, as Jane had mentioned. And I, I'm hoping that Mr. Schweizo will see his way, uh, clear to do that. I would also like to know the timing of the underground piping that's gonna go to this, to, to drain the storm water. I, we are the final gatekeepers. Um, and, uh, this is a beautiful part of our community, and I've been out there, and they have a couple eagles that live at the end of the block, which is kind of cool, not affected by this. But, um, anyway, very, very nice area, wonderful neighborhood, and they don't wanna sue their neighbors. And people don't wanna move in there buying lawsuits, um, and knowingly or unknowingly. And I think we have an opportunity just by delaying this. I mean, I was torn, do I just say no, let's vote no, or do I delay? These folks aren't in any way adverse to having new housing out there and having new neighbors. They welcome that. They just wanna make sure that this problem is gonna be solved and it won't be aggravated. And there doesn't seem to be really a way to, to bring accountability, uh, as Councilman Christensen has, uh, pointed out. And so hopefully, this will do that, that we'll get some kind of a mitigation plan that it'll involve, um, at least the knowledge of the homeowners that live out there and are dealing with this, um, and cause some communication, and then come before us the next time that we meet on it, so.
Okay, further discussion on the delay?
Cindy, just for clarification, do you want, um, continued public hearing?
Um, I think we would have to continue public hearing to just allow the engineering study. Or can, are, are we able to do that with just staff? I don't-
I think it's prudent to continue public hearing.
Okay, thank you, I think yes.
All right, so delay four weeks with public hearing. Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Ordinance's third reading, item forty, is adopting a new chapter twenty-four point twelve Lincoln plumbing code, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Jane. Discussion, please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item forty-one is adopting the plumbing systems permit fee schedules for the plumbing code, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Jane. Discussion, please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item forty-two, adopting a new chapter twenty-five point oh six Lincoln mechanical code, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Cindy. Discussion, please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item forty-three, adopting a new chapter twenty-four point eight Lincoln hydronics code, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by John. Discussion, please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item forty-four, adopting a new chapter twenty-five point twelve Lincoln fuel gas code, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by John. Discussion, please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item forty-five, adopting the mechanical systems permit fee schedules for the mechanical code and the fuel gas code, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Jane. Discussion, please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item forty-six is approving the transfer of funds to allow the city to pay off obligations with the Nebraska Department of Transportation on the South Beltway project, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Cindy. Discussion?
Can we all second that one?
Yay, yay. Let's just call the roll and say we're all happy.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item forty-seven, approving supplemental agreement number three between the City Lancaster County and Nebraska Department of Transportation for the South Beltway project, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Cindy. She beat you, Jane. Discussion, please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Resolutions on first reading are items forty-eight through fifty-seven. Our pending list date certain, item fifty-eight. Our pending list are items fifty-nine through sixty-one.
Before I entertain a motion to adjourn, I have asked Cindy to address an administrative matter.
Oh, yes, thank you. Thank you for reminding me. So our performance audit, uh, committee request, um, due to some administrative snags, did not make it, uh, on publication, so we'll be, uh, having that on first reading next week, but we'll also be publishing that it will have a hearing, um, and we'll be taking action that night.
To suspend our rules.
Suspend our rules, yeah.
Okay, that's just for everybody's information. Now?
Now it is time to move for adjournment.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Jane.
I think I lost some.
Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.